Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. This is Wednesday, August 19th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board. It's a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the News Graphic and the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. First, I'd like to do an attendance roll call. We're doing that because one of our school board members is on the phone with us right now. And we will start out with Mr. Creer.
Mr. Creer is present by phone.
Right. Mr. Leach.
Here.
Padberg.
Here.
Cox.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Goldbeck.
Here.
And Reimer is here. Thank you very much. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the Republic, one nation, without a doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll move on to recognitions and Mr. Bognacki.
Thank you, Chris. This evening, we would like to recognize those who had perfect attendance up until our closure. And so, in the board, on the board agenda tonight, we have over 60 of our students who had perfect attendance up to closure. And then, I can tell you, after closure in the spring, we had, the entire district had perfect attendance from closure to the end of the school year. So, we would like to recognize all the students who were in person and had that perfect attendance up through closure.
Excellent. And moving on to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chris. In front of you, board members, you have the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the board meeting on August 12th, the budget and finance report, which includes the district finance information, including check register, check detail, and credit card transaction. And we also have the personnel report in the packet for your review. I'd ask that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
We'll approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Is there personnel report to be read into the record?
So, this evening, the personnel report, we would like to approve the resignation of Kevin Kerwin, which is our tech ed teacher. He served us well for a number of years. And there's a number of classified staff that have resigned as well.
All right. Motion is second, and we'll do a roll call on all these motions tonight. Leach.
Aye.
Padberg.
Aye.
Creer.
Aye.
Cox.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Goldbeck.
Aye.
And Reimer is an aye. And we'll move on to superintendent's notes. Mr. Bognacki.
Thank you, board members. This evening, there are two items under the superintendent's notes. The first is our reentry plan, and that's the first item, which we are going to review. And the second item is our building project update. I'd like to begin by welcoming all those in attendance and also those who are viewing us from their homes. We are again holding the board meeting in this large venue, which is at 25% capacity, which is about 125 individuals that are allowed at that capacity. And we have social distancing, and we are complying with the governor's order to wear face coverings. At the last meeting, I made mention of the face covering state mandate and inadvertently stated that the mandate was by order of the DPI. It was not ordered by the DPI. It was, in fact, in order by the governor, and it runs through September 28th. I just wanted to make sure for the record I make that correction and thank you to board member David Creer for pointing that out to me. Parents, we are 20 days away from the start of school. 20 days, just under three weeks away from the start of school. Our plans continue to be tweaked and adjusted as we approach the start of the school year. These adjustments are happening at the building levels, as we refine building schedules, structures, and routines. The key parameters the board approved, which were Monday through Friday in person, virtual option, maximizing social distancing, transportation, and robust disinfecting and sanitizing, have not changed. At this point, we are planning for in-person Monday through Friday for kindergarten through 12th grade and a virtual option Monday through Friday for kindergarten through 12th grade students. We are looking forward to providing a quality experience for all of our students, whether they be in-person or virtually. With 20 days to go to the start of school, we are doing everything we can to create a safe environment for our students and staff. We know our students, we know our schools will not be COVID-free. And there is an inherent risk in returning to school. We know that. However, we do know what we can do to mitigate the spread of COVID. We are seeing school systems and colleges around the country starting their school years with mixed reviews. What we are seeing is systems readying themselves with the best plans, the best PPEs, the best safety measures that they can have put in place, and that's what they can control. What school systems cannot control is what happens with their communities and when students leave the system. If we are to stay open, I think it's imperative that we stay safe. We have a good plan in place, and tonight we'll review a bit more about, a bit more of those plans. However, our plans will not work if our entire community does not stay safe. I'll say that again. We have to stay safe to stay open. Do what you must to stay safe. A quarantine period is 14 days. We are 20 days out from the start of school. Take the necessary steps to ensure you and your kids stay safe so we can stay open. Our teachers and administrators have been working tirelessly to finalize the plans for our staff and students' return. Tonight, we will hear from a number of administrators touching on different aspects of our reentry plan. Board members, there is no action requested on the reentry plan. The meeting was not noticed for any action. The planned concept was approved back on July 29th. So, having said that, we're going to start our presentation. Board members, you have screens in front of you that you can view the presentation. Those in the audience, there's a screen behind us, and of course, those viewing online, you should be able to see that presentation as well. So, it's always good to start off with the first slide, which is pictures of our students. It's a good reminder why we are here and the purpose as to why we are here. Tonight, we're going to cover a number of items, quarantine guidelines, all the way down to communication. So, this is basically the agenda of our presentation this evening. It's always important to remind ourselves as to our guiding principles, and these were principles that were decided upon with the board back in, I want to say, early July, if not late June. And it's access, quality, and safety. And those three principles, we apply to all the decisions that we are making, both for those in-person and accessing education virtually. General status update. Board members and community members, you've seen this slide many times, and there hasn't been any significant updates. The two, number one and two, that are in bold are the latest information that we received from the WIA regarding activities in sports. And our athletic director is here this evening, and we have a slide that's going to discuss those new guidance from WIA. I'll just jump down to number 11 on this slide and make it clear that we work closely with the health department. We have meetings twice a week with the health department, and we are and have devised a plan that is going to follow the recommendations from the health department when it comes to quarantine and possible closure. The next slide deals with our internal monitoring criteria, and these are the areas that we are focused on and monitoring on a daily basis. Clearly, attendance rates by students and staff, we can't do that until the school begins, but these are some of the areas that we are monitoring the data on. And we'll go into greater detail this evening on some of the data. I think it's important to note that in working with the health department, they have not given us a hard, fast number in which we would need to close our facility. We've asked that a number of times, and they will provide us, they'll provide us support to conduct the contact tracing. They'll provide support in investigating the cases. They'll provide support in conducting the contact tracing, as I said. And ultimately, they will work with us as far as coming up with a recommendation as to whether a class, or I should say, students, a class, a grade level, or a school should actually be quarantined. It's a very qualitative process, is how it's been explained to me, and so, having a hard number is not something that the health department would recommend due to just the complexities of how this virus works and who may or may not be impacted by the virus. Well, on this slide, I'll have to point out that certainly number four, substitute teachers, class coverage availability, which ties into number two, staff attendance rates by school. I think that's a key piece of this entire model. And at the last board meeting, Human Resources Director Conrad Froner touched on this. It's critical that we have staff availability to run this particular model. And so, we're doing everything we can to set up a safe environment, making certain that we have coverage in place. And part of that coverage was hiring additional substitute teachers for our district. And we've talked about incentivizing substitutes. We've raised the pay for substitutes. And we know that Teachers On Call, the service that we work with to provide substitute teachers, I think most recently, they indicated that about 87% of their subs will be coming back this year to sub. So, I think that's good for us. We know that some systems in the area have gone completely virtual, which means that potentially, we would have greater access to substitutes. But this model that we've developed and we are bringing, and we continue to discuss and present, is contingent on making certain that we have staff members present. So, we know that's a key piece to this particular model. I fielded questions from parents asking, so if we, when do we need to close? How would we know if we have to close? We know that, in fact, we do not have staff availability in the classrooms. That would be a time when we would have to close for a period of time. Parents would be notified through our SkyDart system, and that means that we would have to work on and then direct those students to the virtual online experience. So, it is a bit fluid. We know that. There is not a hard line. I believe Cedarburg has the best chance to make a go of this plan. We have wonderful support from John Koster and Ted Noel and Nicole Cofte, our school nurse. Three of them have been really digging deep into the PPEs and putting precautions and safety measures in place, and I think we have a good system in place. So, I think that's going to help us when it comes to remaining open and staying open for as long as possible. The next slide is a slide that is an image from the health department, and I'm going to call Nicole Cofte up. She's our district nurse, and Nicole has been instrumental in helping us interpret the data and act on the data. And this is a new dashboard, if you will, that continues to be updated from the health department, the Washington Ozaki Health Department. And this is a snapshot just from today. So, this is the data as of August 19th. And what's nice about this is that now you can break it up by county. That wasn't a feature previously, but now it is a feature for us. So, this is specific to the county. And of course, Ozaki County includes a lot of communities. And the question that we get asked a lot, and the question that we ask the health department a lot, is how can we drill down to just our community Cedarburg? And there is certainly a way to do that. And if you look at the next slide, again, these are images from the health department website. And Nicole is going to talk a little bit more about the website when we go there. But this image shows you on the right-hand side, the, specific to our zip code, 53012. And so, you can see the number of cases. I know you can't see it just yet public because it's small, but I wanted to draw this to your attention. So, you can see that now the health department is providing us more information, more data specific to our zip code. Of course, on the left, many of you know what this is. This is the status of the risks in our communities, and you can see where Ozaki and Washington County currently stand. I'm going to ask Brenda if you don't mind going to the Washington Ozaki Health Department website, and then I'm going to ask Nicole if you don't mind just walking us through this website and talking a little bit about some of the features. Brenda, are we good? Thumbs up? Okay. So, Nicole, I will let you take it from here, and I can navigate, or Brenda can navigate around, so the community and the viewers can see where we are on this presentation.
Okay. The graph on the lower left-hand side of your screen is indicative of the number of cases in Ozaki County and the age groups in which that are most affected. You'll see that still, it's the 20 to 29-year-old age range along with the 50 to 59-year-olds. Confirmed cases is there just next to that graph. So, Ozaki County right now has 835 total cases that have been reported, along with 19 deaths. The graph above the confirmed cases has a breakdown according to the cities. So, you'll see Cedarburg is listed there at 158. So, that's our total that we have here in Cedarburg. The next graph to your right is our burden. So, that's the total number of cases per 100,000 residents in the past two weeks. And you can see that the line is slowly starting to take a little dip down, which is the direction in which that we want. Hospitalization rate, we did see a slight increase in that number. I believe last time we met, it was 9.06%, and today, it's registering at 9.15%. And then, the graph on the very bottom on your right are the total cases for the state of Wisconsin.
Brenda, will you go to the next tab? There we go. Thank you. So, board members and community members, this tab is broken down by zip code. So, you can see a number of different zip codes that are, that fall within the jurisdiction of the health department. And on the left-hand side, you can actually click on Cedarburg 53012 and get specific data relative to Cedarburg.
So, this is our burden status right now. So, the rosy pink area is the high zone, which we know we're already classified as high transmission rate area. But you'll notice at the very top of that purple dash, I believe that date is August 13th, we have been seeing a decline, which again, is the direction that we want to continue. I believe for the past three days, our number has stayed stable. I believe it's 213.2. So, I think we've had that number for about the past three days. So, we have hit a little bit of a plateau, but again, we are working our way down. As the numbers continue to drop, in order for us to move from a high to a moderate high burden, we would have to get below 100. So, we still have a little ways to go, but slowly, we're going down.
Board members, any questions on this information that has been presented?
The 835 cases is like live cases, not your, like not to date?
That's total cases.
Okay.
For Ozaki County. So, from start of March to now.
Okay.
This is, Creer, I'm wondering, they give you a definition of what a confirmed case is. Like, what does a positive mean? Is it someone who tests positive without a symptom? Does it include people who've been tested more than once and have several positive tests? How do they, how do they break that out or to come in?
So, that question has come up before. If someone repeatedly tests positive for COVID-19, if that number is added into the daily positive rate for that day, and that answer is no. That is right on the Department of Health Services website. So, if someone tests positive more than once, their positive case is only counted one time. The positives are someone that is symptomatic, and they test positive for COVID-19, or it's someone perhaps that was a close contact, and they tested. Perhaps they were asymptomatic, but they still did test positive. So, that would also be included in the positive case numbers.
Okay. And is there anything on hospitalization rate?
The hospitalization rate right now is 9.1% for Ozaki County. So, I believe that number indicates that that's the percentage of people with COVID-19 that have required hospitalization, not just admitted or not into the ER for testing, but actually admitted into the hospital.
Okay. What's the hospitalization rate for school-aged children?
That I do not have.
That would be, I think, a good thing to have. It might be helpful to have data on our actual population.
I can try to have that for next time, Mr. Creer.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
So, Nicole, there is some data on the right-hand side that talks specifically to children.
Yes. On the graph on your right under Ozaki County, that is indicative of how many children have tested positive. Out of all the tests that were performed, all ages over seven days, that number is 28.6%. So, over the past seven days, 28.6% of those tests that were positive were children. And if you scroll all the way down to the bottom, the total percent positive, so the total amount of tests performed from March through now, it's 15.3% positive rate in the 0 to 19 age group.
Okay. But again, you're going to try to get the hospitalization rate, and we don't, we have any data on severity?
No, I do not have any data on severity at this time.
Finally, one other quick question on the death rate numbers. Does the department give us data on whether there are comorbidities or whether the people have other complications, the fatalities?
It's under, the way I understand it is if COVID, they die from COVID-19, obviously, that's included. If someone is in an accident and they find out that the person also had COVID-19, the cause of death is listed as the accident and not COVID-19.
Well, sure. That's good. I'm just wondering about other conditions, if there's simultaneous conditions, more along the lines of people in the older age group who might have other conditions that might contribute to the fatality.
Well, those with health conditions, those are the ones that are more likely to experience a more severe case, and yes, those are the ones that are more likely to experience a fatality because of the comorbidities.
Right. And you understand that. I was just wondering if they had any kind of data on that specifically?
I do not have any data specific to that at this time.
Can you just repeat one more time? What was the percentage of kids 0 to 19 that tested positive in Ozaki?
For Ozaki County, over the past seven days, it was 28.6%. The total from March till now is 15.3%.
Can you clarify that one more time? 15% of positives were in that age group? Is that what you just said?
Correct. The total number of tests performed was 15.3%, but just within the last seven days, out of all the tests performed, 28.6% of those were positive for the 0 to 19 age group.
15% of tests given, or 15% of positives were in that age group?
Oops, sorry. I thought it was.
That's okay. I just, I was clarifying off of.
15.3% is indicative of the number of total tests for, or the children, so the 0 to 19 age group. Out of all the tests performed, out of all the ages, 15.3% represents the number in the 0 to 19 age group.
Of positive or just tests?
Positive.
Positive.
Sorry. Positive. Positive tests.
That's what I was trying to clarify. 15% of the positive results.
Yes. Were positive for the 0 to.
That's what I thought you were trying to say, but I didn't.
Sorry.
And those are, again, all Ozaki County numbers?
Yes, that is Ozaki County.
And then, here, obviously, it shows the volume within Ozaki, 259 in Germantown, 159 in Grafton, 158 in Cedarburg, and then a sprinkling in the others.
Yes.
I don't think, it's not up there. It's on the other slide, but. In terms of ratio, I know Creer was asking, you know, try to zero in on Cedarburg, but those numbers are there. Obviously, we have percentages by county, but you can kind of equate that to the numbers that we have within Cedarburg.
And again, that data just shows that 158 positives were in Cedarburg. That's what that data says right there?
158.
That's what I think it says, 158 positive confirmed cases in Cedarburg.
Oh, yes. My apologies, yes. So, that's the total from when we started testing to now. So, 158 total positive cases in Cedarburg.
That number, and then, Nicole, just for clarity, and thank you for answering all these questions, the 158 for Cedarburg and the 835 for the confirmed cases in Ozaki County, those numbers will never go down because those are the total tests since the beginning, right?
Correct.
But perhaps a more recent graph would be the burden graph because that does go up and down, indicating sort of the degree of severity that COVID is having on us at any particular point in time.
Yes.
Okay. And right now, that's high.
We are, yeah, high.
Even if we cut it in half, it would still be high?
Yes. Until we are below 100 is the first time that we'll actually move out of that high
Do you know what the criteria is for being in the high range?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, sorry. We say we're in the high range. What is the criteria? What are the parameters for being in that range?
It's according to the burden, which is the total number of cases per 100,000 residents over the past two weeks. So, right now, we're at 213.2 is the number that's listed on the Ozaki County dashboard. Until that number drops down to 100, we will remain in the high zone. Once we hit below 100, then we will move down to moderately high, moderate, and so on and so forth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, board members, we'll continue on with the presentation. If you don't mind, Brenda, we'll go back to the slideshow. So, this next screen, this next shot is new information that the health department has been providing school systems as of probably two weeks ago, and it's specific to students. And what we do, what we're showing here is a comparison between the 6th and the 13th. The data comes out every Thursday, so that's why you're seeing the 13th.
So, the graph on the top is from the 6th. So, you'll see that the number of positive was 20% for the 0 to 19 age group. That number has increased slightly, or actually, it has increased, we're at 28.6% over the past seven days. And then, again, the total percentage positive test rate for 0 to 19 has increased from the, I can't see from here, is it 17? Down to... I'm sorry, Todd. Can you help me out? The total percentage on the bottom?
About 13% on the 6th, 15.3%.
There we go. Thank you.
The next slide is a slide that we're using kind of as our baseline data point, and we're calling it baseline because we approved this, the reentry plan back on the 28th of July. And so, we gathered a snapshot at that time, or 29th of July, I should say. We gathered a snapshot of that data, given that that was when the plan was approved. And so, we've been gathering information, and we'll continue to show this. Our goal is to build a dashboard, so it's a bit more interactive. Our goal is to build a dashboard, so it's a bit more interactive. But this does summarize some of the key pieces that we are monitoring.
So the eight nineteen, um, data, it's highlighted in, uh, in orange there. You can see for Ozaki County, the, the case rate has gone up. We're up ninety-eight from the twelfth. For Cedarburg, we've added another seventeen cases, um, from the twelfth data. Hospitalization rate, as I said, we're at nine point one percent, so a slight increase from the nine point zero three percent. Uh, the rolling average for the state of Wisconsin, um, is at eight percent, um, so we have seen about a one point eight percent increase there. And the cases per a thousand, um, and this is specific for Ozaki County, um, is nine point two. So essentially, one case for every a hundred and eight residents of, um, Ozaki County. For the zero to nineteen, again, we see an increase of about fifty-six from our eight twelve data. There's a total of, excuse me, three hundred and one. And then for district cases of COVID-19, this includes both staff and, um, students. We are at eleven, so we've had two additional cases reported.
This is a very good page of data, by the way. I appreciate this.
Thank you.
So Nicole, just a question about the district cases. So those are individuals tested positive. Are, are there also individuals that have been quarantined along with those? So these are, is, staff or students who have symptoms, um, they were tested, and they tested positive, and now are, um, in isolation or quarantined?
Yeah, the eleven is, uh, positive cases. We've had two or three students under quarantine. They did not become positive, but the eleven is the, between staff and students, that's the number of positive cases in the district at this time.
I guess I, I point that number out to you, board members, because, uh, we've been asking our, our staff and students and parents to make certain they are, um, staying safe. And, um, when you see positive cases like this, you would anticipate that there'd be other positive cases, and there'd be a number of individuals quarantined. So what we're finding is that those who are, um, symptomatic are doing what they need to do, uh, stay away from others and, and getting a test and then, then quarantine. Um, and so when I opened up with my statement about, um, staying safe to stay open, this is a great example. Though, if, so if you have symptoms, you, you don't come to school, you don't go to a sporting event, you don't practice with the team, you, you tell your parents and you, and you take necessary steps.
So Todd, uh, this is Creer. Are, are we going to be focused on total case numbers? Or are we gonna maybe develop some sort of, um, criteria beyond just the number of cases? Because they're probably gonna keep going up. Are we gonna do anything as far as watching our age groups here in the school? Or severity, or hospitalization rate, or anything like that?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, Dave. So, um, behind the scenes, the district cases, we have that broken down more. So we have it by school, um, by grade level, um, so we have more detail on the district cases that we will monitor.
I have one question. How are we asking our, um, students, obviously this is summer? How are we asking them to report, or how, how is that, how are we collecting that information to know that our students are sick?
Typically, um, it, right now, it's our students that are involved in the extracurricular activities. So typically, what happens is, um, the parents will reach out to the coach, and then the coach in turn reaches out to me to let me know that they've been positive, and then I reach out to the parent.
So are we getting any contacts right now because school isn't in session from the Health Department? Because when we sat in the meeting with the, uh, for school board members, she said that they were going to be notifying the schools anytime they had positive that was a school-related. Are we getting that now or just when school starts?
We are getting it a little bit, not with each and every case. And part of that does have to do with how open families are regarding activities that their child are in, if they attended, um, graduation parties, if others were exposed. But typically, I will reach out to the Health Department and let them know that I've, you know, been notified of this is a positive case, and they have notified me, um, in two instances, um, that we've, or actually, three, I take that back. Two incidents of students and one incident of staff. So I think part of that is because we are in summer. But once school starts, I think that communication will be, um, increased quite a bit.
They, they had ensured us that, so hopefully they will.
Yeah.
So I think this is just a critical point to, to emphasize a bit. So we see that there are eleven cases. We're not in school yet. Um, when school starts, uh, as I said on the onset of this meeting, we are not going to be COVID-free. And so there's gonna be an immense amount of work that our administrators and Nicole are going to have to do once we start seeing, uh, cases, positive cases, because then we are going to be involved with the contact tracing, making certain those individuals are then isolating and quarantining, making certain that they get the access to instruction. So it is a complicated puzzle that we are, are seeing develop. And I can't emphasize enough that, uh, to stay open, we need to stay safe. And so with twenty days of, uh, left before school begins, I think it's critical that we all do what we need to do to stay safe because it will give us our best chance of continuing to keep all of our, um, schools open and all the school, and all the students in, in school. I thought it was, uh, important, it's just a good segue, just to talk about the quarantine guidelines. Um, you've seen this slide before, board members, and Nicole, if you could just touch on what, what that means to be quarantined?
So this slide, um, represents isolation and quarantine. Um, if a staff or student tests positive for COVID-19 before, they will be allowed to return to school or work. They have to be fever-free for twenty-four hours without the use of medication. They have to experience an improvement in symptoms, and at least ten days have to have passed since the start of their symptom onset. Any individuals that are deemed a close contact, um, are also known as exposed. Those are the individuals that would be, excuse me, contact traced, and they would have to undergo fourteen days of quarantine. Um, they're, they cannot test out of quarantine because symptoms from COVID-19 can, um, develop anywhere from two to fourteen days after your last exposure. So even if they would test on day nine and that test came back negative, they would still need to complete their fourteen days of quarantine. So that's for staff, that's for students, um, and that's also per, um, CDC DHS guidelines, and also in the WIAA guidelines as well. Um, if a sibling has, this is a question that comes up a lot. If a sibling of a student, um, the student is sick and he has a sibling, does that sibling have to stay home? They have COVID-19? Yes. So the sibling would have to be isolated with that child for the at least ten days. And then after their sibling is released from isolation, the fourteen-day quarantine would then start for that, um, sibling. Because then we have to watch, that sibling has to be monitored to see if they develop any symptoms.
Just a mathematical question. If, if a, a parent had it, that's a good example, and, um, they start the process, but perhaps they didn't go in for testing until they were right in the middle of it or towards the end even. If they had a positive, it was test on day one, but then they felt much better a week later and went in and tested negative for it, would that start the fourteen-day clock then, or is it automatically twenty-four days? Once a parent or the family now is deemed to not have it anymore?
Right.
Fourteen days from that point, or do you still do the twenty-four day?
The fourteen days starts from the last date of exposure. So we'll say, um, the student has now completed the ten days, the one that was ill. But the siblings in the home, their last day of exposure was on day ten of that student's isolation. So they could get tested and develop symptoms, and that could either come positive or negative, but they would still be required to complete the fourteen days of quarantine. So yes, it could be twenty-four days at least.
Other questions for Nicole?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nicole. I really appreciate it.
Nicole, great job. Thank you for answering all our questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So board members, the next slide, um, is Department of Health Services. We had been anticipating some guidelines, some of the Department of Health Services. I can tell you that the guidelines came out, um, uh, late this afternoon, and I have not had a chance to dig into them, uh, in depth. But what I can tell you is that what we're looking for from those guidelines, uh, it's, it's not in the guidelines. We were hoping that, and most districts around the state, we're hoping for some, um, a decision framework that would allow us to make decisions regarding, um, whether we need to go full virtual or hybrid or in-person, and they would align with the thresholds that Nicole had shared with you, where it was moderately high, um, high and, um, and, and low. And so it, it sounds as if though that framework is not going to be moved forward to, um, the state, and we're gonna end up working with our local health departments to develop, uh, a decision framework. So, um, more on that after I dig into the document a bit more. We are also anticipating some WIAA guidelines from, of the Department of Health Services. And, um, those guidelines have also been, um, pulled off the table, and, um, they're indicating that we're gonna work with the WIAA and our local health officials to make determinations regarding sports and activities. So the long anticipated wait for the guidelines from the Department of Health Services, um, it's out there, but it's not providing the guidance that we had once thought it was going to. My guess is that it got caught up in Madison for whatever reasons, and so now we are, um, left up to our, um, our own devices with the Health Department and the local superintendents to come up with some decision framework. And so work's gonna begin on that. Our next section is teaching and learning updates, and we have a number of school administrators here this evening. And we're gonna turn it over to Alan Growth, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, who's gonna kick us off.
Todd, um, I'm sorry, Creer, I've got a question real quickly on the DHS guidelines. Are those gonna be guidelines that we may or cannot adopt, or are they gonna be things we have to do?
They are just, they are just guidelines, Dave, um, and from what I've seen, a lot of what they're providing is information that we already know and we have in place, and in some instances, we are further along. So, um, they are just guidelines.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Alan Growth, Director of Curriculum and Instruction for Cedarburg School District. And tonight, I'm gonna kick off this teaching and learning section. Kirsten Rose, Director of Technology and Assessment, will join me afterwards. Jane Hulk, Tony DeRosa, Adam Kurth, Principals of our Elementary, Middle, and High School, will also be sharing some updates. So for those of you in the audience, those of you at home, uh, just a couple of updates. The next slide, uh, talks about some professional learning that's occurring. So March, when we closed in the emergency closure, all the way through June, the Technology Department and, uh, with the support of our Digital Learning and Innovation Coach, provided ongoing professional support to teachers. So we did a weekly update where we linked flipped content for teachers on how to navigate the virtual environment for students at home. So all during that time, April and May, teachers were growing in their knowledge base on top of everything that they knew before they entered the emergency closure. So as we approach September eighth, we are looking at more strategic support for a subset of teachers. And of course, everything that we learn in this group will be shared with all teachers. So on the screen is a book that we'll be reading called The Distance Learning Playbook. And, uh, we're gonna be offering an opportunity for staff to join us at an up-and-coming institute that this, these authors will be hosting in a week. The cohort of teachers are teachers that are specifically assigned, uh, virtual content or virtual learning. So students that are at home, these are specific teachers that, um, will have their assignments dedicated to supporting those students. And it's our way of coming tightly around a group of people that will be providing support to children at home and being intentional around, uh, some of the, uh, the layers of the overall experience, from developing a classroom community virtually to how to conference effectively, um, various engagement strategies we can use as a teacher to make the experience not only enjoyable, but rigorous and, uh, meaningful for students. So this, uh, we're looking forward to getting this started. Um, this is something that will rapidly occur, and the Institute will complement the book study, which will, um, occur over the next couple of months. So, and there are topics that are listed that we'll be discussing, everything from setting that stage, getting the, the learning environment set up for students on that first day on September eighth, to making sure that teachers are clear on the content and the essential content that we want students to learn when they're at home, and, um, feedback and assessment, making sure that we're monitoring their growth and progress over the course, um, of the, of the quarter, semester, or year. The next area is the Canvas content. So based on feedback we received from both staff and parents, I shared a couple of weeks ago that we were going to expand the implementation of Canvas. So this is now underway. So, um, parents of secondary children, so six through eight, nine through twelve, you've already had a chance to experience Canvas. And that learning management system is a way to, um, establish courses, make them public to students, and make, make them public to family members at home. So we are now poised and prepared to have Canvas courses set up for elementary students. So if you're a virtual learning teacher, then you will use Canvas to communicate to families. In the box, you'll see the blue box that's on the screen. Those are some of the features that we've already established inside Canvas for all elementary teachers. So things like the daily schedule, um, where assignments will pop into a calendar that's, uh, again, secondary parents have seen. And also, parents gave us feedback through the survey that, um, this was something that was, sometimes, uh, can be challenging just to see when things are due. So Canvas will shore those kinds of details up so that families will see consistently a recurring pattern of homework assignments appear in a calendar so that you'll know when they're due, and so will your child. And then, of course, if you're a virtual learning teacher, there'll be a much more robust use of Canvas to include all digital links to all the content that they're experiencing inside the class. So we're really excited about this. This completes a, a deployment of Canvas four K through twelve. So not a lot of school districts have taken such a, um, shall I say, bold step to ensure that it's for everyone. And we feel it's really, we're well-positioned because of six twelve has already set the stage for us that four K through fifth grade will now, um, join the ranks. So that is now underway. And I'm going to ask Kirsten Rose to come on up, and she's gonna talk to you about some of the technology-related improvements. Yes?
So regarding the Canvas, is, my experience with Canvas is, you know, some teachers, right off the bat, used it. It was real robust, and then some teachers had a bit of a lag, and I know we talked about this. Is there gonna be a system where it's gonna be monitored, um, you know, teachers' use of Canvas? So it's, it's similar across the board, as much as it can be? Because, uh, that's really, really the conduit for, you know, for myself to check, you know, how my kids are doing and, and look into it. And, uh, you know, and then, Sam, you had talked about a different view at another meeting for Canvas, I believe? So where are we with that, with those things?
So, uh, great question, and we've, uh, learned a tremendous amount from our six, eight, and nine, twelve colleagues, and also from, uh, feedback from, um, both staff members and families about consistency and how important that is. So the Canvas, uh, leadership team represents all three elementary schools. We've already met with them and have laid the groundwork for what the expectations are for all teachers. And that, that team of teachers, while representing Thorson, Parkview, and Westlon, could see all the features that Canvas offered, and we came to an agreement on what the features are that everyone will use. So we've already built the Canvas modules to be a mirror image for all students at every grade. So it's already set up for all teachers just to go in now and start to move content into it. So everything that, um, again, we've learned from six twelve is just, the more we can bring consistency, it just, teacher by teacher, grade by grade, we're very committed to making it consistent. So we're excited that we feel like, and teachers were very affirming of, um, and their voice was heard in light of features that we wanted to make sure, that we wanted everyone to have access to. So those things like student schedule, assignments, calendar, and links to content will be the same in every grade, four K through, uh, fifth. And furthermore, um, I would add, we have a schedule already set for the Canvas lead team to meet up with us regularly to check in on the implementation. So that was also built into the schedule just to ensure that any questions, any challenges that are coming up, we're here to help them and support them and, uh, work with every school so that it's consistent. Any other questions on either area? Awesome. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Good evening. Alan did mention Canvas, and that's a real focal point. One of our key infrastructure pieces in our learning environment is that Canvas, um, environment for students. And I think, um, Sam, you mentioned in our last board meeting about... students. And I think, Sam, you mentioned in our last board meeting about having observer accounts for parents. So, we currently do have observer accounts for parents in our 612 environment. Onboarding with K5 or 4K to 5, we will be pushing out observer accounts also for those parents, too.
Great.
So, some of the things that we've been working on in technology, whether we're a traditional on-campus learning environment, a full virtual learning environment, or if I'm a teacher who may have both situations in my classroom at one time, and that would be a hybrid environment, many of the pieces of technology that we use are things that we use in all three learning environments. So, Canvas is one of those. We also have quite a bit of software that we will utilize for practice and for personalization. For math, we have things like iXL and Dreambox. For our reading and com arts classes, we have Lexia and Raz Kids and Brain Pop. At the high school, we use method test prep for our high school ACT prep. Along with those pieces of software, we also will be using other electronic resources, things like Overdrive, which is our ebook library catalog, our library collection, becomes really important in this environment. When we have students who may be at home and not able to access our library collection, our physical library collection, we are beefing up what that ebook collection is. The other piece that ties closely to that is we have begun a partnership with the Cedarburg Public Library, and our families will be able to authorize their students to have a library card, which will enable them to access the Cedarburg Public Library's ebook collection also. Other things that we have are online textbooks, we have CSO, which is a content creation tool for our K5 students. We have electronic whiteboarding apps, we have other library databases that are electronic, and then, all kinds of other electronic resources, like Flipgrid and other tools. One key piece that we will use to keep connected with our students at home, whether it's a teacher connecting with all their students in their class that's virtual, or if it's groups of students working in the school with students at home, is our video conferencing, and we use Google Meet. Google Meet is coming out with some newer features, and we have purchased the enterprise version. So, that version enables hand raising, so a student who's remote can raise their hand, they have a question. It can create breakout rooms for small group discussion. We're able to screen share, take attendance, and record those meets. And as you know, our students' grades, 4K to 12, each have a Chromebook, so they can access all of these pieces of technology and the curriculum, whether they're in school or at home. Our teachers have multiple devices in their classroom. So, our teachers will have a desktop computer that may have a webcam connected with a external mic that will be able to be attached to their lapel, so they have a better voice sound to the students who are at home. They also have a laptop or a Chromebook, which they can put in front of them, so they can see their at-home students, if they have that hybrid learning environment. They don't need to watch that if they don't want to, they may have support staff taking care of that. But they do have multiple devices. We also have some iPads if they need to do, share things from the iPad. External microphones, tripods, doc cams, touchscreens, stylus, all kinds of pieces of technology that really enhance the teachers' ability to communicate teaching and learning activities with their students. When you talk about all of those things, depending who you are, that technology is going to overwhelm you. So, we have quite a bit of plans to support our teachers and our students, whether they're teaching from home, from their classroom, whether the students are at home or in a classroom. We'll be really busy on the technology team, in the opening days, in our professional development days, customizing each classroom with each teacher, within each department and each grade. So, we're looking forward to it, that's our best work. We love that time in our department, where we actually get to work with the teachers. Summer, we work not with anyone but ourselves a lot, so we're looking forward to that. Any questions?
I have one, Kirsten. So, in the scenario that we are in an in-person class, and there's 15 kids or whatever there, teacher ends up getting sick, ends up having to be home for the quarantine period, is it theoretical that I hear you say that teacher could teach from home if they're asymptomatic, and well, they could teach from home in that environment, and the kids could be in school? Do I hear that correctly?
Yes, that is, that is exactly what could happen. Obviously, we'd have to have some sort of supervision in the classroom, but the instruction could be delivered by the classroom teacher.
Synchronous or asynchronous? It could be both things from that situation?
It could be both.
Okay, great.
I do think the key piece to that is making the staff availability to feel that that position correct, having someone in the classroom to supervise the students while the instructions are provided.
And my second question is just on access. So, you know, we read sometimes that, you know, some places in our state or the country do not have internet access, they don't have the ability to, you know, get on the internet and access all these wonderful tools we have. Do we, A, have any issue with that in our district, and then, B, are there resources out there that we are assisting some of those students that maybe were uncovered that had those problems? Maybe just kind of tell me a little bit about that.
Sure. We do have students who don't have adequate access, internet access, in their homes. Sometimes, if they may have it, if it's just normal school, and in the evening, they need to do some work. But we do have the situation in our homes where we have multiple children in a home, with parents who might be working from home. We also have families that don't, live in areas that don't have quality broadband internet access. If you live in the town in some places, you might have satellite, which can be a little quirky. But we have hotspots, mobile hotspots, that we have purchased and have contracts on, that students and families can request through the health desk. And we have them, I think we have 10 right now, the most we've had out is eight. So, we continue to keep those available, and make sure that everyone knows they are available.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Kirsten, I know some districts are ordering equipment, and we're in that boat. We've ordered equipment, and I know a lot of it has arrived. And back when we closed down in the spring, we had to order additional Chromebooks, and we turned those around pretty quickly. Just an update on just the technology that maybe is here, and some that has yet to arrive, and how we're planning for that?
Most of the technology is here. We have an order of microphones that's not here yet. We have webcams for every classroom, we have Chromebooks for every student. If you walk into our IMC right now, you're thinking, how do you do this with all these Chromebooks? I don't know which end is up some days. And I'm like, really, Dave, you have this? You know? And he's like, yep, we got it. They're everywhere. So, yep, we do have the things we need. And as our teachers come in, and we do that custom work with them in their classroom of what they need, we may come upon some things that might work better for others, and we'll work to get those.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Kirsten.
Thank you.
So, at this time, I'm going to take public comments.
Jane, you can still make your way over there, though.
So, we will do the public comment portion of the meeting now, and we'll suspend this presentation. Notice that no later than 7:45 PM, we will take the public comment portions. With that said, there is a board policy that we will only accept an aggregate of 30 minutes of public comment time. And I'd like to make a motion at this time to waive that, in the interest of accommodating the people that have come here, and let them speak. So, I can make a motion to waive the 30-minute time limit per board policy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Yes, Sam, Cox.
Motion, a second. Rule call votes. Leach?
Aye.
Padberg?
Aye.
Krier?
Aye.
Cox?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Goldbeck?
Aye.
And Reimer is an aye, so that is waived for this evening. I'm going to read a disclaimer. "In the past, the State Attorney General issued guidance on how governmental bodies, such as school boards, should conduct the public comment portion of their meetings. This guidance was given to assist governmental bodies in avoiding violations of the state's open meeting laws. The essence of this guidance is that unless the topic being brought to the board by the public is listed, on that meeting's agenda no significant discussion can be held on that item. Instead, the topic may be listed as an item on a future meeting agenda whereby discussion could then be held. The reason for this guidance is not to limit open discussion, but rather to ensure that all interested parties have equal opportunity to participate in the discussions with the full school board. We on the school board encourage community input, and we want to hear from you, our constituents. However, we also take the state's open meetings law seriously, and will follow the guidance as outlined by the state attorney general. Therefore, if an item is listed on tonight's agenda, open dialogue may occur between the individual from the public and board members. If it is not listed, the board will be limited to listening only, and will not be able to respond to comments or questions. If your item is not listed on tonight's agenda, and you want to have a discussion regarding the topic, you're encouraged to contact the district's superintendent and request that your item be listed on a future meeting agenda. As always, you're encouraged to discuss any item with individual board members on a one-on-one basis outside of the meeting setting. Please make your comments to the board and not to any individuals in the audience. As per school board policy 167.3, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. Please note that this is a public meeting, and we ask everyone to address one another with the courtesy and respect you would like to receive in return. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. As a reminder, this meeting is being videotaped and livestreamed, and will be broadcast by the district's EduVision channel and website." So, Mr. Leach here will be keeping track of the time, and when you get past two minutes, he will hold up a sign, and that'll say that you have one minute left. So, with that said, we have a list of participants, and I'm just going to say everyone's first name on the list. When we get through this list, if your name is not called, you can simply come up to the microphone. So, first name, and I'm just going to say the first names of people. Jesse, are you here? Come on down, please.
I'm here in the center.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Jessie Mushambu. I live at N18W6415 Carrick Street. Excuse me. We have lived in the Cedarburg for 10 years, and my oldest started school at Westlawn in 3rd grade. We have been a part of the Cedarburg School District since that time, with my youngest going into 6th grade this year. My youngest was even part of the high school preschool program. Do you want this off?
Maybe you can move a little closer. You can keep it on.
I am here to tell you that Cedarburg School District is failing our children. You have failed to keep a welcoming environment for all. You have failed, and now it is time to change. You look the other way when cars parked in your lots have Confederate flags. If you say, "I have not seen them," that is also a problem. The N-word is commonplace in the hallways and at sporting events. Again, if you say, "I have not heard this," or not from our students, it proves that it is so normalized around the schools, that it is not even known as what it should be. I went to a winter sports meeting last year, and the athletic director said that he was proud that none of the athletes from Cedarburg say or do racist things. My son laughed and said, excuse me, this is a quote, "That is bullshit." A friend of my oldest son in the high school sees the difference when she walks into the school with my biracial son than one of her white friends. There was a time that he had pine cones thrown at him in middle school because he is a different religion. This speaks volumes on the normalization of treating another human being that is different with disdain. My youngest, who just finished 5th grade at Westlawn, has been dealing with racism since kindergarten. He has come home so angry, that when he has pointed out that he was wrong, nothing is done about it, except to tell me that he has behavioral problems. And I quote from his 3rd grade teacher, "He needs to be on medication." My husband was profiled in the elementary school office. He and his friend were talking about smoking some meat that weekend when they were waiting for the kids. We had not even gotten out of the parking lot, when I got a phone call from the principal. She told me that when he was talking about smoking marijuana in the office, and when I brought up the fact that he was profiled, I was told that would be a surprise, that how often parents talk about this. No examples have ever been able to give it to me. I've mentioned to staff that there needs to be diversity training, and when you are teaching children not to bully another student, you should also be teaching them about the biases and how they can hurt. I am told that it is a surprise that this is happening in Cedarburg. It's so diverse. Really, guys? 6% is diverse now? It took me years to get my youngest the help he needs with reading, because I was told he would grow out of the backwards letters and numbers. He is just an active student who needs to calm down. This is an example of the biases that BIPOC children face. They are labeled as difficult, and often do not get the help that they need. My youngest no longer wants curly hair. He has shown me pictures of little white boys because he wants straight hair like everyone else. He does not want to even go back to school after this year. He's asked if I will please homeschool him.
Thank you.
No, I'm going to continue.
No, you're...
Look at what racism does.
Your three minutes are up.
Look at what your biases have taught your children. This is what allowing racist things being said to my son and to go unpunished has done. We need to stop normalizing the biases that the staff and students are bringing to the school with them. These biases do hurt people. They are not kids just being kids. My oldest has no faith in humanity anymore. This is not because of me, this is because of you and the adults in Cedarburg that choose to let these things go unpunished. Cedarburg, the school district, needs to have a system in place where kids can go that suffer the same things my family has had to deal with. The kids need a safe environment to report, and staff that will not dismiss. You guys now know the problems. You guys need a diversity committee, and you need to start from there. Do better, please, for my family and others.
Thank you, Jessie.
Thank you. All right. Kara?
Mr. President, if we cannot follow the policy as policy, I will, at some point, then ask that we end and not let further public comments, because I don't want to take a chance of not everyone being able to speak tonight.
Good evening, board members. My name is Kara Stewicki, and I reside at 14045 Twin Oaks Lane in Mecklenburg. My daughter Nora will be entering 1st grade at Parkview Elementary this year. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address the board. First and foremost, I would like to thank you for your commitment to the families of the Cedarburg community. The board and administration have clearly worked very diligently to outline a comprehensive plan for returning to school this fall. Upon my review of the reentry plans set forth to date, I have several concerns that arose that I would like to address with the board, most notably, concerns regarding synchronous learning, as well as mitigation measures that will be employed by the district to help reduce transmission of the virus. Given the high level of COVID burden in Ozaki County, as well as an astounding 15% positivity rate in Cedarburg alone, I am cognizant that even families, including my own, who have selected the in-person option for their child or children, could be diverted to virtual learning at any given time if a positive test or exposure occurs. In reviewing the reentry plan for virtual learning, I noticed that virtual content will be both synchronous and asynchronous. As a working parent, and especially as a healthcare professional who is unable to work from home, I have concerns regarding the required element of synchronous learning. While I understand the goal of engagement through synchronous learning, I would assume that this expectation will be virtually impossible for many of us working parents to meet. While older children can access synchronous learning independently... While older children can access synchronous learning independently, younger children need an adult to supervise their virtual learning. Can the board provide clarification and details regarding their expectation of synchronous learning? And how will the content be provided if the children are not able to access on a synchronous schedule? My second concern relates to social distancing and the measures that the schools will employ to achieve this important measure in reducing the risks of viral transmission. Given that Parkview has in the range of 500 students enrolled, I have concerns regarding how many children will be entering and exiting the building at the same time with lack of social distancing. The current reentry plan outlines modified procedures for entering and exiting the building, but does not expand upon the use of social distancing during these times of the day. Can the board further explain details of this plan? And has a staggered in start time, end time for the day been considered as a means of controlling crowds at pickup and drop-off times? And has offering staggered days of attendance been considered as a means of obtaining smaller class sizes and increasing the ability to socially distance? Thank you for allowing me the time and consideration to address my concerns with the board and I look forward to continued communication from the board and the district regarding the plan for a safe start of the coming year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer? Jennifer Collins?
I'm used to there being a lot of Jennifers, so... Jennifer Collins, W-59, N-783, Highwood Drive. Superintendent and members of the board, I am a CHS alumni, proud parent, proud MPS educator and MTA union member. I appreciate your hard work on our district's plans, but I'm asking you to do better. First, I am asking you to reject the reopening plan and vote instead for 100% virtual return. Based on current data from the Health Department, Ozaki County is in the red categories for burden, trajectory, case status, and overall risk. The number of positive cases is still high in the community with community spread happening. Reopening schools is unsafe for staff, students, and families at this time. If we truly value our educators, students, and families, our first and foremost concern should be to keep them safe, just like we would our own family. Also, I reject the false narrative that by giving families the choice of virtual or in-person learning, we can provide a safe option for our community and the greater good. I urge you to pass a 100% virtual reopening so that no student, parent, staff member, or community member gets sick, hospitalized, or dies as a result of school reopening. One person is unacceptable. A harm to one is a harm to all. I ask you to pass a 100% virtual reopening plan using a phased approach with returning to face-to-face instruction only when key metrics are met. Second, I urge you to change blanket of district-level language around virtual teachers and the requirement to teach from brick-and-mortar buildings. I reject the false narrative that virtual teachers are being given accommodations. Virtual teachers have been asked by administrators to come into the buildings or resign. Virtual educators with medical conditions should not have to jeopardize their health by coming into a building. Educators should be allowed to choose to work from home or from their buildings. Educators should be trusted as professionals and should not have to choose between their health or their career. We don't give accommodations to our special education students with restrictions. We shouldn't give accommodations to educators. I reject the false narrative that educators with underlying medical conditions can apply for FMLA or ADA as an accommodation. Yes, they can, but a 100% virtual start would eliminate the step for employees with medical conditions and would keep vulnerable people safe. FMLA can only be used for 12 weeks and after 12 weeks, then what? This is not an acceptable accommodation. ADA can be used longer, but do we not trust and value our educators enough for them to choose for themselves whether or not they would like to teach from an empty classroom or from home? This is not an acceptable accommodation. Not passing a plan that allows real choice for educators will lead to teachers resigning. Wisconsin already has a teacher and substitute shortage. How will the district address additional staff turnover? How much does the district value its teachers if they are hearing from administrators they can accept or resign? Are Cedarburg School District's educators disposable? Third, I urge you to pass a plan that includes health insurance, benefits, sick pay, and emergency leave for para-professionals and support staff. I'm further asking that district pays for COVID testing for pairs and hourly staff. Every member of-
Thank you.
-is important.
Jacqueline?
Thank you for letting me speak. I hate public speaking, so we'll ring, well, we're all with this. My son is blessed with a beautiful-
Excuse me, can we start the clock over? Can you-
I don't start it till they're done with their address.
Okay. Can you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, Jacqueline Fritz, N-101 Susan Lake, N-101-6835 Susan Lake.
Thank you.
My son is blessed with a dyslexic mind. One day, he will change the world. But today, the classrooms are not equipped to handle his beautiful, amazing mind. In the classroom, if a teacher gives 20 minutes to the kids to finish work, if 19 out of 21 finish in 10 minutes, they move on. I would expect nothing less. God forbid my son hold back the entire class from realizing their full potential. I'm glad that the district has chosen the in-person because right now, people outside the district, a very small minority in the district, are willing to hold back every child from reaching their full potential. Now, I was gonna get up here and bring a picture frame and redo my speech with the microphone covered to show you the difference between online and in-person. And I decided a gimmick wasn't gonna work. But some of the things that do go on virtual. Mom, the Zoom didn't start. Mom, mom, the teacher is turning around. I can't hear the microphone. Mom, Hunter's Zoom is too loud than my Zoom. Mom, you're on the phone with the client. I can't hear my Zoom. I don't miss it. There's nothing on the board. They updated it or they didn't update it. It's frustrating. Now, in my house, I pick up the slack with my son. But I'm wondering, if we go virtual, who's gonna pick up the slack for the entire district? Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen?
My name is Kathleen Netzel and I live at 320 Royal Stone Court. I wanted to speak to the board tonight because I'm concerned and I'm confused by what I see taking place across the state right now. As you know, many districts are rescinding their opening plans and returning to virtual instruction only. I'm concerned that it may be up for discussion in Cedarburg as well. Can anyone from the board tell me if there are any plans for voting on this here in Cedarburg? In the event that something like this were to take place, I would really ask if the board could please consider the following. Based on your survey, at least 80% of students plan to return in person. It doesn't seem that families in this community want virtual learning to be their only option. I'd hope that the board would answer to the families in the community first before bending to any outside pressure. We pay the taxes and it's our children that are directly affected. Secondly, we've heard how the case numbers are rising in the county, but case numbers alone do not provide enough context for what's actually taking place. And I would hope the board would consider looking at additional data. For example, could we also look at the current number of cases in addition to the total number of cases? In addition, could we look at the current number of hospitalizations as opposed to the hospitalization rate? For myself, I'm a little confused what that hospitalization rate is. I had the opportunity to speak with Kirsten Johnson back on July 29th. The hospitalization number on that date was three, yet the hospitalization rate was around nine. Today, we see that same hospitalization rate. I had the opportunity to listen to the county board meeting this morning and if I understood her correctly, I think the hospitalization number is zero. In addition, I think it would be helpful to look at the severity of cases. It troubles me when I hear that students might be quarantined for 10 or 14 or 24 days. What if they only display the symptoms of sniffles? That's concerning to me. In addition, when you meet with the Health Department, can we also address if all the negative cases in the county have been recorded? As I hear, more than 30,000 cases in the state have not been recorded. That could significantly impact the statistics we're looking at. I'm gonna skip the next part just to move on a little faster. As elected members of our school board, I'm hoping that you'll put our students- I'm hoping that your first consideration is for the education and well-being of our students. I'd like to see you to continue to fight to get our children back into school. What's taking place across the state right now with the reopening of schools is starting to feel like a game of chess. Please don't let our children be used as the pawns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jean? Jean Wells? Connie?
Connie Kincaid, N-75W-7255, Linden Street, Cedarburg. I come before you as someone who is an hourly employee, who has a brother in a different district who is a long-term sub. Both of us have been very strict about distancing and keeping my son safe and our community safe. This past weekend, we got together, wore masks, spent time together with our grandma who's 96. It was amazing. We had not seen him since Easter and even then it was between a glass door so that my son could see him for five minutes. He drove six hours to see my son through a glass door for five minutes. My brother's school starts this week. This visit was on Saturday. Sunday, my brother texted me to let me know that he had just gotten contacted that he was in, that he was considered a close contact to an individual that tested positive. So he scrambled to get a test because his school starts this week. Meaning the professional development, the training, I'm sure you understand what I'm communicating. For me, I then reached out to the district that I work for as well as Cedarburg to better understand what would my responsibility be as an hourly employee to our students, to the students that I work with, excuse me, and what the responsibility would be for Cedarburg hourly employees, substitutes, whether they are short-term or long-term. Currently, the policy stands where I would be completely fine to be going into class and tying shoes, zipping up coats, helping children with their sneezes. That is completely fine until I find out that my brother tests positive. That can be anywhere from two to seven business days. Meaning, he could have gotten a result yesterday, which he has not, all the way until next week. So I stand before you right now, someone who is completely fine to be working with your children, helping the most vulnerable and youngest, knowing that I may not be the safest person for them. But according to what is in the policy, I am allowed to be there. For me personally, I would call ahead and say, "I don't quite understand what I'm allowed to do, but I am not coming into school yet. I am waiting for my brother's test results to come back before I am less than six feet, less than three feet, less than a foot away from the kids that I love, work with, care about, and the families that I work for, for the district that I work for." I'm asking you to take a look at that wording. Take a look at those tertiary cases. And for anyone that has fallen in the cracks, my brother paid $300 for his test. He's hoping it'll get covered, but he left his job to come in. Am I at the one minute? Almost? Okay. I'm asking the district to step up with those expenses.
You're at three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see the one minute.
Yeah, I held it up before.
I'm so sorry. I think I made my point. I hope I did. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak tonight? Anyone at all? Okay, then we will move on and close the public comment portion of the meeting. Thank you for everyone for speaking and sharing your thoughts with us. So that would make us move on and I believe Mrs. Hulk is up. Is that correct?
Can I ask a question before we do that?
Sure.
Based on the last comment? Todd, our policy states that it's only after a positive test? Or can we have something added in there that if you were exposed? I mean, is there something in there that says if you were exposed even prior to the test? I mean, you'd hate to have somebody wait till the test comes back. I know exactly what she was saying. A friend of mine went for a positive for the test. Her daughter was the one who was the close contact. It took five days for her test to come back. The whole family went to one of the free clinics and they got theirs back in two. So it could be a- And I would hope our staff would be taking every extraordinary care, but if we could just look at what that wording is, I think it'd be a really good idea.
Will do. Rick, thanks. I made a note on that.
Thank you.
All right.
Jane, all yours.
Thank you. Jane?
All right. Thank you for letting me speak tonight about the elementary schedule. Last meeting, Katie Ramos came and gave you some general ideas about what we were thinking. We've had a lot of time to work together, not only as the three administrators of the elementary schools, but also with teams of teachers within our schools. We know that based on the feedback that we got from parents, that they are really wanting to know what this looks like. We understand the curriculum will stay the same. We understand the instructional minutes will be similar, but what does it look like for our child? Especially for children who are considering the virtual options. So what we see up here is a draft of a potential first-grade schedule. We could have put any grade level in here because our instructional blocks are actually pretty similar. And if I put a third grade up alongside of it, it would just be different times during the day. At the elementary school, we are looking at having a combination of dedicated virtual teachers. There might be a dedicated virtual third-grade teacher for the district or for a building. A lot of that is dependent on the actual data that we get back from the parents and what options you're choosing for your students. Based on those choices that you make, then we'll be able to look at our current staffing and make appropriate decisions so that we have manageable and well-staffed groups for both our virtual students as well as for our students who are sitting in seats in the building. So this schedule is an example, as I said, of a first-grade schedule. And I'm gonna walk you through just a little bit of it. For those of you who don't have elementary school students in our schools right now, I apologize. I'm sure this is way more detailed than you would ever want to see. For those of you who have students in elementary schools, you're probably hoping for just a little bit more. And many of you have been reaching out to the elementary principals and will continue to try to answer questions as we are able to do planning and move forward with our plan. So what we see right here is, for example, when our students arrive in the morning, they're going to be checking in, doing lunch count. The students at home are probably getting their work area ready, logging into their Chromebooks, checking clever, and looking for their assignments. Then we have a block at the elementary schedule for in-school and this has been a change. We know that many of our students may need some adjustment coming back after being out of school for five months. And homeroom time is something that we feel is really important, that we have time to have team-building, social-emotional learning lessons. Students can have, you know, a show-and-tell type of activity where they can be connecting as individuals. That's also important for our virtual learners. So in the examples where we have a virtual classroom with a virtual teacher, there might be 20 kids in that group. They will also have a homeroom- They will also have a homeroom time live on their Chromebooks where they can interact with one another and learn about things to make them better citizens of their virtual school and get along with their peers and share things about themselves personally. The next block that you'll see is something that we always have in our school, and part of our math block is number corner. That's a twenty-minute instructional block, live, delivered by the teacher. It'll happen in both environments, on campus and at, at home or wherever your, your off-campus students may be. We plan to have mask breaks scattered throughout the day for our children who are on campus. And we also plan to have breaks for our students who are off-campus. Right there, you'll see at, I think it's like nine-thirty, we have a mask break, probably outside, maybe stretching, follow the leaders, Simon Says, for our kids that are in the school. And at home, it's a brain break. We know that our students, the younger they are, the shorter their attention span is, and we wanna make sure that we're really responsive to that so that they're getting the variety of activities so that they can be fully attentive to the learning that we need them to do. Followed by that, in both environments, there'll be an interactive read-aloud. Some of you can probably see that if we had a classroom where maybe a teacher had a group of six in-person learning students and twelve virtual students, that could happen with a camera on the teacher. It also could be that this is one of those instructional blocks that we push the record button because a family has contacted us from that classroom and said, "You know what? Our schedule doesn't allow for this. We can't do that at that particular time during the day." So that it wouldn't be live for your child, but your child could still get that same interactive read-aloud mentor-text experience that the rest of the students are getting. Followed again by another mask break for the kids in school. We're thinking it'd be important to have some socialization breaks for kids who are at home. If children are in a virtual classroom and they've got twenty peers, the teacher is leading the instruction on a Google Meet. We would like to have some opportunities for kids to have less structured, though they're young and they'd be supervised, but opportunities to play games and interact with their peers. Some of you may have seen that this spring with some of the field days and AMP activities that we had with our kids. So then, the next block in this group was the AMP block, that art, music, and PE. An adjustment that we've made to reduce contact for students and for teachers is we are planning that one classroom will have art every day for three weeks. They're not gonna go from art one day, music the next day, and FIAED the next day, like we typically do. Reduce their contact, reduce their environments. Then their next rotation would be music, and the rotation after that is FIAED. Following the AMP time, they'd come back, and in, we'll always have opportunities for handwashing, movement in between. We're gonna have reader's workshop. It'll look similar at home as it does at school, except after the mini lesson that the teacher will deliver, twenty, fifteen, twenty minutes, talking about what they should be looking for in their reading activities. Then the students that are in school will be supervised by their teacher in front of them. The children at home, the teacher will probably still be on the Chromebook and be quite available, maybe pulling up small groups or working with individuals conferring with those children. We want parents to realize that we're not expecting them to read the lesson plan and deliver the instruction to their students when they can. We want to be the ones teaching the students. We're certainly going to be partners with our parents, and at times, there will be opportunities for parents to take on a larger portion of that if their schedule demands that they do that. Throughout the day, we'll have recess and lunch breaks. Obviously, the kids at home would have their own break. And then we can go to the next slide to look at what the afternoon could look like in our elementary schools. Science and social studies, we're exploring the idea of using a lot of our digital resources to have more of a flipped learning experience. Already, a lot of our social studies and science curriculum comes from resources that might have videos and activities that the kids can do. So, children in the school might actually be doing some of that flipped learning on their Chromebooks as well as the students at home. This is definitely a time of the day that could be asynchronous, so families would easily be able to access this content at other times during their day. Recess breaks at school would equate to breaks for the students at home. Writer's workshop would involve mini lessons again. Kids would log in. Guided work, we, I've seen teachers have a writing block with a group of kids virtually, where maybe soft music is playing. On occasion, she'll call over one or two kids. "Maybe I haven't seen your work this week. Bring it up. Let's talk." Other kids can just keep working independently. And then ending the day with homeroom, just to have some nice closure to the day, some team-building, refocus on what they're going to be doing tomorrow, and get themselves ready for their homework or anything that they may have coming up. So, again, this is a, this is a draft. We've been working on a lot of options. We are still looking at creative ideas and open to adjustments, and we've given schedules like this to our teachers to start looking at and giving us feedback on. Any questions?
Based on the parents' responses, have you started to identify different, different staff that would be doing the virtual off-campus, leading that? Were you able to figure out your needs based on that survey, or where are you at with that?
Yes, we were able to use the, the initial data that we had, based on how many students we would have in each learning environment, and then look across the district at the three elementary schools and make some decisions based on staff that we knew had communicated an interest in that to us or we had seen some particular skills. So, yes, we have approached staff, and we've asked them to be some of the lead learners in the distance learning course that Kirsten and Alan had mentioned earlier. Eventually, all teachers would get that training, but we wanted to tap into those teachers who we knew had a flair for virtual learning.
Great. Thank you.
I have a quick question for you, Jane. The, this schedule was for a first-grade class, right? So, second grade would be slightly different, third grade would be slightly different, lunch times would be different, recess times would be different. Have you thought about sending this out or putting it on, is it on the website for your school page, possibly?
So, as I said, this is a draft. And we do tend to give parents the information about where instructional blocks are, where AMP is, but it's, this is way more detailed than we typically share out. But we definitely, by grade level, will be able to share this with parents if that is requested.
And I jumped ahead in the slides, and I see that, is the, is it, Todd, is the number when they're null? When we did the parent survey, if it's null, does that mean we haven't heard a response from that family yet?
Correct.
Because it looked like at the elementary, the high school, we had a very high level of responses, but not as much at the elementary school. So, I'm kinda thinking some of this information might be helpful for parents to make up their mind, because it seems like we've got a relatively big group of undecideds at the elementary.
Correct. There might've been a bit of confusion, because initially, our survey did identify making a decision for the quarter, and then having the second survey be an opportunity to change their mind if they felt that a different model was going to be better for their student. But in all of our efforts with our, our planning and our determining staffing and our determining not only classroom locations, but how many students in a class, we realized that within a couple of weeks of starting school, we're going to be having to plan our next learning environment and potentially be changing assignments and teacher, homeroom teachers for children. And we didn't think that that was the best practice for children or for staff. So, we have asked families to make a commitment to the semester. Of course, if there is something that is not working for a family on a case-by-case basis, we would address that and try to find a good solution for the family. But for our planning purposes, we do ask all families to go back in now and give us some information about not only the first semester, but what they're anticipating second semester might look like as well.
I, I think it's important to make sure that parents know, though, that if it's not working out at the quarter time, they, we've been saying all along, that the quarter, they could switch that and adjust accordingly. Because I think with just questions people have, it's hard to commit for a full semester. And I understand your planning reasons. That makes sense. But I think we need to be flexible on that and let the parents adjust at the quarter, too. And as the school year evolves.
And I would safely say that all of the principals have been quite flooded with those questions lately. And my response to families is, I will do whatever I can to try and find the best solution for each child. Make the best choice you can for your child at this point. And if at some point, it's not working for me, we'll see what options there are. Families likely wouldn't want to make a teacher change at that point, but that might be the only option. And we, you know, it might be that if we add five kids to virtual, maybe we have five kids who were virtual that prefer to be in school, and maybe it will work. But again, that's changing that classroom for the teacher, and we really want them to be building relationships, having routines in place, having a connection and a partnership with the families. So, ideally, families can make a decision right now that they can live with for that semester. That would be better for kids and for our staff.
I, I tend to agree, but I also think we know that it's likely that a staff member or a child becomes ill, and they've gotta go from the in-person to the virtual then. But we know that's gonna happen, likely. So, I, I would think that if it happens to one, you know, one person, three people, ten people, we still need to adjust to that. This is unprecedented times, and we need to stay flexible as a district, too, and respond to parents if they wanna switch back at the end of a quarter and say, "Hey, it's working really well. I want to get, as you said, back into that classroom where it's in-person." We should, I think we should go out of our way to try to accommodate those changes, and vice versa.
Yeah, I, I do agree with you. And one thing that we've been talking about is that if a child needs to be quarantined or it becomes ill and needs to be home, is changing their school environment and changing their teacher and their classmates in their best interest? Or in that case, would it be more similar to when a child is home? Right now, they have their tonsils out, and they're out for two weeks, and that homeroom teacher provides the instruction, makeup work, and opportunities to maybe engage with that child on meets on occasion. And we're leaning toward if it's not a long-term, like the rest of the quarter, that the, the assigned homeroom teacher would take that responsibility of helping that child keep up with the instruction and, and keep those relationships intact that they have already developed.
Yeah, that would be the best option, I think, for the students. Would appreciate that. Families, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Jane. Kevin, to your point, we do have a couple of slides coming up that speak to the learning environment selection. And the reason the high school has more respondents is because we, we did not ask the high school parents to make a change of semester. It's the quarter. So, those results are from the survey that was done probably a week and a half ago.
Oh, okay.
If they did wanna make a selection, a, a change, they could, but we did not ask them to make a choice between semester and quarter, because the classes at the high school are better aligned to quarter. I can tell you from the data that we're looking at and how it's trending now, it looks like we're gonna end up just about in the same spot with an eighty-twenty split. Mr. DeRosa, all yours.
And if that eighty-twenty split at Webster can remain exactly the same as the first sign-up window, we'll be the, we'll be in a much better spot to hand out schedules on Tuesday. So, similar to, to what Jane had talked about, you know, adding some additional details to the schedule. When you're creating a synchronous virtual plan, the daily schedule really doesn't change for those students who are electing to be virtual. So, what I put on the slide is you can see our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade schedule. That has remained unchanged from a time standpoint, from the last couple of years, from when we made the major change to the schedule. But the, the biggest change is getting rid of the AB day and really kinda going to an AB semester, thus reducing the number of classes a student has in a quarter. So, for our sixth graders, they go from eight down to five, which is much more manageable, both virtually and in the building, or in the event we all had to go virtual. Seventh grade and eighth grade. In seventh grade, we're at eight down to six, but we're toying with that piece right now with our world language to possibly semesterize that, to reduce that down to five classes as well, to make that a little bit more manageable. Eighth grade is gonna go down to six, and that's simply because of all the elective choices and what we all have to get in during a school day. Some of the, the parent follow-up questions that I've, I've received is, "What does virtual learning look like at Webster?" You know, not drastically different from what I shared in the other presentation with our back-to-school plan. The, the big picture is, you, you really have two choices, but it's a total numbers game when it comes to scheduling and looking at sections. With the first round of parent selections, we were at a hundred and ten students, and it was roughly shaking out to be about thirty, thirty-five in a grade level. So, the big picture is a combination of, of, of two cohorts as it relates to virtual. I think there were some misconceptions that cohorts was referring to students in school. There are no cohorts for the students that are electing to be in school. For the virtual students, however, there is the potential to create a cohort of, say, twenty-five or thirty students that could potentially be in many classes together as an entire virtual class. A majority of the Webster staff feel pretty strongly that if I'm a teacher and I teach three sections, I average about twenty-eight, thirty students in a section, and my sections are all ninety minutes long. Most of the staff is, is saying, "As a teacher, I would, I would prefer to have two all-in-seat students and one section of entirely virtual to really be able to plan and dedicate the, every single day, an entire lesson, to those virtual students." That's always, that's not gonna work out perfectly for every single class and every single grade level. So, you will have, the other piece of the puzzle, the other option, big-picture option, is there will be classes that are gonna have a small cohort of students, six, seven, eight kids that will be virtual, that will be accessing the class synchronously from home. Also, a combination of kids that'll be in the seats. So, as you heard Kirsten mention earlier, there's, there's certainly a lot of work to be done as far as the hardware and preparing the classrooms and getting staff acclimated to, you know, all the hurdles that, that go with that type of virtual instruction. But, you know, as the Webster staff, that's what we're looking at for the big picture for the schedule. What it specifically looks like within a class period, which is another one of the, the questions I've received from several parents, that's hard to describe, because that'd be like asking, "Well, what is Mr. Ruff doing social studies every single day?" You know, every class looks different. Every content area looks different. Lesson planning looks different every single day. So, certainly, I think it's gonna be a combination of what you would see being in the classroom if you were in person. So, I just provided some examples of what this could look like virtually, where students are starting on a warm-up in Canvas, or maybe they are starting with the class and, and watching a live mini lesson. Maybe it's a recorded mini lesson. There's times where there's gonna be live instruction or recorded instruction to, to watch. There's gonna, obviously, gonna be accessing materials, reading materials, reading as a group, a virtual cohort. Maybe it's mixed cohort with students that are in the classroom. All the different types of assessment tools that our staff uses, verbal assessments with the students that are virtual, you know, and wrapping up a class in a very similar fashion how our teachers do. So, you know, while the question gets asked a lot, my, my response isn't very flashy, because it's oftentimes is going to mirror what our students do or what our, our staff does on a daily basis.
Questions, board members?
I just have clarifying questions. So, essentially, the schedule that you're showing here right now for the middle school, the virtual students would see about the same. They'd be on that same schedule, kinda blocks of time, but the instruction might look a little different depending on the class?
Yeah, and I think it'll look a little bit different depending on if I'm a teacher that has one section of all virtual students, compared if I have three sections where there's a small group of virtual students in each of those classes. The, the type of thought and planning that goes into that has, has to look different if you're doing your best to, to reach all learners. One of the pieces with the virtual pieces, what we don't want is there's a camera in the room, and it's recording ninety minutes. It's streaming ninety straight minutes live of whatever's going on in class. You know, I, I don't think most parents, even though they've elected for the virtual piece, want their student to be staring at a computer screen, you know, for the entire duration of the day. So, we definitely wanna be mindful of that, and, and teachers will create lessons and structure their, their class periods so that it isn't just the constant staring at the screen, waiting to see what happens with the teacher with students. You know, rather, I think it's gonna be a lot more strategic grouping, strategic instructional moments, so that the at-home students can kinda turn off, turn on, you know, at, at the appropriate times. Of course, a lot of logistical issues, both in school and at home, to, to make all this work as best as possible, but that's the mindset that the staff has going into this.
Excellent, Tony. Nice job. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Kurth, the high school principal.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity again to speak to the efforts of our staff to create the best learning opportunity for students. It's been interesting since July 29th. Our building has worked very hard to prepare a building plan that will provide optimal opportunities for our students, both virtually and in-person. Tonight, I want to take the opportunity to speak about the virtual learning dynamics that will take place and speak to the possibilities and to some of the realities that are occurring. What we're doing, nobody does, nobody's done it, nobody is an expert at it. Because typically, when in the educational realm, you either are offering a virtual class, and our colleges and universities have become proficient at that, and some of us have experienced that, or you offer an in-person class. The hybrid is with both at-home and in-person students is a challenge and it's something that we don't know what is possible yet. Our staff have worked very hard to look at the opportunities of what we can do. And there's a list here. We, obviously, observation of direct instruction, that's one of the simplest. Live, real-time display of learning on smart boards, whiteboards, and other learning connected applications, observations of labs and activities and experiences, and the list goes on. Mr. Rose has ordered in the necessary items that our teachers need to be as successful as possible. We just don't know what "as possible" looks like yet. And I can reference a couple of the examples. We don't know what it will look to show a lab. We don't know what it will look from at home. We don't know what a classroom discussion will look like. If I wanted to speak about a piece of literature in my English class, we don't know what that will look like until we are able to really get our hands dirty and start to practice with this equipment. And most of our staff haven't been in the building since the middle of March. And so our staff have been working very hard. I want to be very clear that, you know, our staff are superheroes. They've been working all summer in teams without the direction of the district or myself. They've been working because they have inherent responsibility that they feel towards students. And so they are as prepared as possible to get in and do their best to offer a top-level instruction, both in-person and virtual. And so we're looking at all the opportunities that we can provide for our students. We believe we can provide top-level instruction. You know, I would have preferred to have told our virtual learners that they're getting Polaroids mailed home every day because everything is better than that then as we move forward. We don't know how smooth the transition will be into our classrooms. So I do want to be very clear about that. The effort will be there, I have no doubt, in our 72 staff members that they will work extremely hard to do the right thing and provide the best opportunity for our students. And you can see, again, all the opportunities that we hope to provide our students through the virtual learning atmosphere. Most will be housed in Canvas and Google Hangouts. Canvas continues to be our main housing unit for all of our learning and it will continue to grow with our virtual learners so that they have access to that information every day. We do plan on live streaming and recording that live streaming so that students have the ability to either re-watch or watch for the first time. And we do also have that Virtual Hour built in specifically so that our staff and students have opportunity to connect outside of the specific class. So, you know, we're doing all that we can. We believe that we have looked at every opportunity that we can to provide a high-level virtual experience for our students. And now we're excited to actually get into our classrooms and put it into practice and really hone in on what we can provide in each class and each department specifically for our kids.
Thanks, Adam. Any questions, board members, for Adam?
I mentioned last-
This is Frank, I've got a question. Adam, it probably, it probably depends on specific classes, but generally, how are we going to handle, examine, you know, exams, assessments, things like that, to make sure that they're fair or the same or do it, you know, measuring the same thing virtually versus?
Yeah, we have staff leaders who are looking into assessment resources that will hold the validity of an assessment. We'll also be looking at different types of learning, you know, culminating activities, project-based learning, those sort of pieces that can display a student's learning in a different way. It's definitely a challenge when you have 20-some students sitting in your class and, you know, five to 10 at home, how do you assess them appropriately and with validity to each test? So that's something that we're definitely discussing and working on. And it will look different in every class as well. You know, some, it's much easier to have an assessment in an English class where I can, where I know that their response is as unique to them rather than, you know, maybe a science or math class where there's more specific structures to it. So our staff are working into that, working on that, looking into that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I was going to say, I commented last time, I thought you have a very good plan.
Thank you.
You've done a great approach to try to keep the interactions between students down, still provide the education, in-person education that we're looking for because I think we are still a better in-person educational system.
Absolutely.
But you're doing the best to evolve the virtual side too. So I appreciate that.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Nice job, Adam, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
The board members will continue with the presentation, the learning environment selection results. Kevin, you had alluded to this and you skipped ahead in the PowerPoint. What you're seeing is a dashboard that we're monitoring. We opened up another window on Friday and it closes this Friday. If you look closely at it, the orange is the in-person. The dark blue would be in home or virtual. And the light is null, meaning that they haven't made a selection yet. So the reason the high school, again, is mostly orange is because they had already made that selection for the quarter and the other four buildings are in the process of making that selection. If you looked at those who've made the selection so far and if the trend continues, as I said, it will be roughly about the same where we break as we did with our survey about two weeks ago. This next slide just shows you an example of the dashboard, a little bit more detailed. This is by grade level for our elementary schools. We are getting parents who are indicating that they are interested in continuing in a virtual for second semester and I think that does help us as far as starting to develop what does that potential staffing model look like for second semester. Once this information is, once the survey closes, this information will be provided to board members through the superintendent update or if we have the meeting that's intended to be planned for next Wednesday, we'll give you the details on what the selections were of all the parents. Next item is athletics and extracurricular update. I've asked the athletic director, John Hannum, to come and give a quick presentation on this. I had indicated on the onset of this meeting that we were expecting some guidance from the Department of Health Services. They did not provide that guidance. John and myself were on a conference call with other superintendents and A.D.s today, so we're moving ahead without that guidance and planning accordingly. So I'll let John give you a brief update.
Good evening, appreciate the opportunity. First thing I'd just like to start off with is, you know, given what our student athletes endured last spring, you know, we're really excited to have fall sports underway. And before I just get into the brief update here, you know, we've had our campus open since July 1st and, you know, we've had practices, we've had camps, and, you know, we've had, you know, a variety of things going on and they've been very successful. And, you know, Nicole's data speaks to that. So, you know, that's something that's exciting to share and, you know, it's something that, you know, I want to make sure that we're all aware of. So when we get into our updates here, this Monday, we kicked off our fall sports. And our fall sports are always staggered. And the WIA delayed the start this fall and many of you are probably aware of that. And you see the sports that started this past Monday. And then the intention is on September 7th, we have football, boys soccer, and then boys and girls volleyball to start. Okay, so that's the plan that we're moving forward with here. And we're aligned with the rest of the North Shore Conference to move forward with this, okay? And, you know, we meet regularly with the other schools to discuss this. And the WIA did craft a plan to have the sports take place in the fall. And then they also designated a time period in the spring to play fall sports, if that makes any sense. And that would have been, that would be in March. So just so you're aware of those options that are there. So we're moving forward with the dates that you see up there, okay? And also, oh, I'm sorry.
How does that work? I mean, if part of your conference says we want to, or does the whole conference have to decide?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So our conference is aligned right now to move ahead with the dates that are presented here.
Okay.
Okay, yep.
Just having two, it's like, part of your conference plays now, part of it plays in spring. Who really wins the conference?
Sure. Yeah, no, that's a great question, so yeah, yeah. So, yeah. So, and then the other thing is, is, you know, with the information that was just shared here by Adam, students that would be attending virtually have the same opportunities for extracurriculars. So that would be afforded to our entire student body. And our coaches, we've met as a large group, we've met individually on numerous occasions and we're using the recommendations by the WIA to craft plans that will be in place for social distancing. So our practices and competitions are going to look a lot different than what they normally would. And just to give you a few basic examples, and I have some underneath there, just a simple arrival and exit of practice is going to be different. The thing that we keep stressing to our student athletes is no congregating, okay? And, you know, just how you start off every practice and end it is everyone comes together. And that's something that you just don't see anymore among our practices, our camps and everything that's taken place since July 1st. And then all of our drills, we have the necessary spacing. But the thing that is important to understand is that soccer's going to still look like soccer, volleyball's going to look like volleyball, and football's going to look like football still, okay? And then with our locker rooms, those will only be used in situations of necessity. So at the end of the school day where we need to change, and that's it, okay? So for competitions, up until school starts, the locker rooms will not be used. And our clubs, all of our clubs will still move on, except they'll meet virtually, okay? And I've been communicating with all of our advisors and we feel that this will not be an issue at all. They're devising plans right now to provide an excellent experience and this is just to mitigate person-to-person contact. And then, as I referenced before here, the WIA has created sport-specific guidelines. Those have come out in July, they've updated those as of last Friday. So we are following along with those and we use those recommendations. And they also came out with recommendations for competitions so that those are consistent from school to school. So those are things that we're talking about as a conference so that, you know, when we go and we play at another school that we have consistency amongst all of our places we compete. And then our travel protocol, you see, we use vans, we also use buses. We will wipe down any touchpoints and before and after any competition. And then we'll have assigned seats for all of our student athletes. And then the windows will be open and masks will be required, okay? So I just wanted to give you this update. I could go into great detail on all this, but these are some of the, you know, major points heading into fall sports here. Do you have any questions?
Can you talk to me about marching band and what's going on with that, timing and so forth?
Yeah, we had marching band, we had band camp already take place and they're continuing to practice. So they also adhere to our extracurricular guidelines and we've broken them down into smaller groups to make sure that we're adhering to the, to our health department guidelines that are in place here. So they've worked closely with Adam and myself to make sure that we're providing a safe environment for our students there.
Are there any recommendations so far as far as spectators for these?
Yeah, that's a great question. We're hoping to have a resolution again as a conference so there's consistency in the next week or two. We still have some time here before our first conference competition. Other conferences have come out and those range all across the board there. So that's something that we hope to have in the next week or two.
Thank you. Is there any guidance on masking or any of that type of thing with outdoor competitions?
For outdoor, there is some guidance by sport. You know, for example, if you look at cross-country, at the beginning of a race, there'll be some expectation for masking until they may take off. That's all depending on how, you know, the volume of participants. But otherwise, that's something that, you know, if an individual, if a student wants to wear a mask, they can, there's no expectation.
What about indoor swimming?
So indoor swimming, they would have to wear a mask until they would approach, you know, until they'd be entering the water and then when they would exit the pool.
Okay.
Okay.
So John, an example that we talked about today is volleyball. So if, for example, another district had an expectation that competitors wore a mask during volleyball and we traveled there, then we would follow those expectations-
Yep.
-and wear a mask.
Yeah.
And the vice versa.
That's correct. All right.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Excellent, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next section is the last section, board members. At the last board meeting, I had indicated that it may be wise for us to have in our back pocket another alternative to the current option we're providing Monday through Friday in the virtual. And what I shared is that we want to make certain that whatever we provide, we continue to follow our guiding principles, access, quality, and safety. This image shows you the continuum of the concept that we were discussing and I wanted to bring back for a bit more discussion. On the far left, you have the regular, normal school year, everybody's present. That orange column is our current option, which is in-person or virtual. And then I'm going to skip all the way to the right, which is closure, full in-person. That's a move, full closure, no in-person instruction, that's 100% virtual. That's kind of what we experienced when the school district closed down in the spring. The area that's under consideration is that hybrid model in the middle, which is a combination of in-person and virtual instruction. What you see here is some definitions and you've heard these definitions this evening, the synchronous instruction, I'm not going to read it, asynchronous. Then you get into the blended, which is in-person plus asynchronous learning, and then the hybrid. And then a bit more detail on what is blended learning and what is hybrid learning. You hear those terms kind of interchangeably and there is actually a distinction there. And I wanted to make certain that you and the public sees that there is a distinction between blended and hybrid learning. What, when would we use such a model? I think it could be used to transition or from the current model and dial back. For example, if we are in a position where we are facing excessive quarantining, extreme high student absences or staff absences, we may need to dial back from our current model. And this hybrid model could allow us to do that. Or on the opposite end of it, if in fact we had to go to a complete closure for whatever reason, maybe by order, and we wanted to phase back into a in-person model, the hybrid model could be used at that time. I had mentioned that it would be wise for us to have some guiding key parameters around what this model could look like. And so I have five bullet points there just for consideration. It does allow us to, if we were to go to a hybrid, it does allow us to cut a class in half. So we're talking about a section of, a class section of 24 and saying 12 of those would be in-person and 12 would be at home. By doing that, allows us to maximize social distancing. I think it's important that whatever model we come up with, we are continuing with the pacing of the curriculum for both of those cohorts. If it's possible, it would make sense that we cluster families in those cohorts. That way, you're not having someone in school and while someone's at home and then it's causing undue stress and pressure on the parents that always have a parent home. And I think it's imperative that we maintain the current number of transportation routes. We talked about that, one route in, one route out. And lastly, I think whatever model we come up with, I think it has to work well and transition well into our current model. I'm not suggesting, and this is not an action item, I'm not suggesting we go there. We have one model right now on the table and that's Monday through Friday and we're starting school on September 8th. But I think it's wise for us to have something in the back pocket in the event that this current model just does not work out the way we had intended. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions, board members, about those five guiding parameters.
Yeah, Todd, I appreciate you bringing this.
Yeah, Todd, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I was curious to see what this could potentially look like since, you know, we're not in a world where it's a non-COVID world yet. And so it, it, we need to have options, whether it's to go out or to come back in. So excited to see this. And when you say the AV cohort, that would be like, A, students are in Monday, Wednesday; B, students are in Tuesday, Thursday? Like, is it every other day thing?
That could, it could be that, or it could be a variety of that. A, A, A could be on Monday and Tuesday.
Sure.
B could be on Wednesday and Thursday, and then we kind of alternating Fridays. It's, it's a lot of different options that exist there.
Yeah.
By deciding or by giving us this guidance, and I'd sit down with the administrative team, we can develop. There's plenty of hybrids out there that we can look at. And I think it wouldn't be too difficult to come up with one.
Yep, and I think too, just, you know, it was a lot of shock last time when we had to pull out of school suddenly and drastically. So I think any opportunity to just have conversation around other options that could become a realistic world for us is just really important so we can talk through that. People are prepared, they can bring comments, questions, concerns. So I do appreciate you bringing this up because this is a very real possibility.
We're, we're entering uncharted, charter territory, and so it's just wise to be prepared.
Yep.
I think it's a great idea to be prepared and, you know, like Kristen said, I mean, we didn't know we were gonna head down this road. So it's, uh, it's good to have all avenues covered like you, like you are, so appreciate it.
Any other comments, board members, on those five parameters? I think if we can use those, that would guide us into development of that hybrid model.
I just have a quick comment. Just based on how I understand this to work, I'm, I'm personally, if we get to that point of doing a hybrid model, I, I prefer the hybrid versus the blended approach. Where kids are going home with homework and only coming for part of the day. I'd rather see them in school all day, if possible.
We'll, we'll bring back whatever model it is that we create to make certain the board is comfortable. So thanks, thanks for your input. So next item, just communication, board members. We're continuing to move through to the start of the school year. We have a tentative, at least, set a board meeting for next Wednesday. I think we've had a board meeting, you can see a number of them since July 15th. But just wanna be prepared in case there is a change in anything that we need to discuss. So that's a tentative meeting set for August 26th. And then the first day of school is set for September 8th. And, oops, I'm sorry to the public, but there's the timeline. And lastly, I've encouraged everyone to visit our website. Karen Egahoff has done a wonderful job of populating all the information that's presented at board meetings on our website. There's an FAQ section. And the individual school plans that have been presented are also on our website. So continue to frequent our website, and you'll get the latest information.
Can I ask a quick question? Some of the emails I got recently, people were under the impression that there was gonna be a vote on this topic tonight. That really wasn't the intent to have a vote on this, that I'm aware of.
So Kevin, that's a great question. So back originally, when we laid out this particular timeline, we did have this date noted as a vote date. But as we began to develop the plan, we needed guiding sooner, and we wanted to bring the, the, the details to you quicker. So if you recall, we voted on July 29th. The, the plan was voted on then, and since then, we've just been bringing updates to you. So there was no intention to vote on it today. It's not, it's not on the agenda to have action.
And I'm still a supporter of the plan that, that we came up with in the past. And I am curious, as we get closer and, or as we adjust, if we need to do any hybrid adjustments or blended, those discussions. And I think it's worth planning for that, how that would work. But I'm still comfortable with the current plan in place, personally.
Thanks, Kevin.
Todd, what if people look on the website here and they have questions that are not covered here? Like some specifics, should they go to the building principals? Or how would you like them to address those questions? Who should they email?
Yep, they, they can certainly email the building principals. They can email any of the directors. They can email Karen Egahoff. There's actually an email address that's associated with FAQ. So they can submit their question there, and we will address it. If it's very specific and they leave an email, then we'll follow up with them. If it's a general question and it makes sense to post it on FAQ, we will do that.
Thank you.
That concludes our review of the entry plan, board members.
At, at this point, I'd like to take a five-minute break and reconvene at approximately 8:50. Five-minute break, please. Todd. I was, you know... All right.
Okay.
Let's... Reconvene.
Your time.
I'll get my steps.
We're all back.
Dave still there?
Dave, are you still on?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
All right, excellent. So we'll move on to building project plan update, Mr. Bignacki.
Thank you. This being a regular board meeting tonight, we have Ross Eger from CG Schmidt. Ross is gonna come down to the podium. I think, John, I don't know if you are a part of that, or Ross is gonna take it, okay? And we're gonna have our usual update on our building projects. And hopefully, board members, you've had an opportunity to at least drive around and take a peek at them, the landscaping and the exterior of our buildings, and are, are coming along nicely. And I'll extend that invitation to you again. If you ever wanna tour of any of our buildings, please don't hesitate to reach out myself or John, and we'll, we'll arrange a tour. Welcome, Ross. And thanks for your patience as we went through our reentry plan.
All right, thank you. Good to, good to be here tonight. And we'll do a, a quick update on progress over the past 30 days. Again, you see the three major themes of the project from its inception. Overall schedule, we're at a, a pretty significant milestone here. Our Phase 1, if you wanna call it that, is, is ending. And, and that will include the conclusion of all of the work at the elementary schools and the middle school. And then the progression and our focus at the high school on Phase 2 work, which is the, the south end of the, south end of the building. So a little bit of the progress here at the high school. Last week, we had a pretty significant pick. You may have seen that crane that you see in the center picture there. That was the crane that was used to lift the new pool pack unit onto the roof. Actually, pull the old unit off and put the new one on. It's about a day's worth of setup and a day's worth of pick, and then another partial day of, of disassembly. But things are moving along. You can see the cafeteria, that's one of the, of major pieces of the addition on the northwest side of the school. You see the snack shack there taking shape. A lot of the kitchen equipment is in place now and being hooked up and getting ready for our health inspection department next week, Thursday. The site work, we're focusing on that as well. A lot of site work has happened, the paving. Obviously, if you parked in the lot, you know that the binder's down in the new northeast parking lot. And that continues around through the northwest corner as well. So progressing well. Our final inspections are over the next week and a half. And then we focus our efforts on, again, on Phase 2. At Webster, all the renovation work is proceeding well. We've got, actually today, received occupancy permission from the city. We have our, a few final inspections yet there. The office you see in the upper left-hand corner, some of the LGI group in the center image, and the library on the north end of the building in the upper right-hand image. At Parkview, again, a few images that you see on the screen. We're winding down there, the flooring. There's a few pieces of flooring that are still going in, some paint touch-up, a few sort of those, those punch list items that we run into at the end of the project that we're focusing in on. Staff is starting to move in, get set up at the school. And we do, of course, have our occupancy inspection and approval at that school as well, as well as at Thorson. Thorson, again, you see some of the images there. The paving is complete at, at both of the schools. The image that you see there in the upper right-hand corner is one of the new renovated toilet rooms that we did in the existing space. And one of the classrooms there with, excuse me, the, yeah, classroom area there in the center image. At West Lawn, the front facade is taking shape. We've got some metal panel work to do on the upper right-hand image there. But the storefront is complete. We're finishing some flooring up in the office tomorrow, and that space will be ready for staff to move in. We have our final inspection there with the building inspector on Monday next week. And staff is starting to set up in those classrooms in the existing space already. So moving along well. So we'll move into our budget update. The format is, is somewhat changed from what we've been looking at the last couple of weeks or months, I should say. We started by listing off the, the funding sources that are available for the work. That's all included in this listing of, of budget costs in, in Section 2. Section A is our funding summary. And of course, we have the $59.8 million referendum approval. We have $690,000 of fund $50 available for kitchen equipment only. That's per, obviously, state law. We can only spend it on certain items. So that is dedicated towards, again, kitchen equipment throughout the district.
And those aren't referendum dollars, correct?
Those are not referendum dollars. In addition, we have referendum borrowing interest that the district has taken advantage of, estimated currently at 1.272 million. So a total, what we're calling our total funding source is at 61,763,238. Again, similar to the past months, you have our, our previous update in the first column, and our current budget in the second column. So as you go through, obviously, Section A, our, our available dollars haven't changed. As you go through the next couple of slides, everything on, remaining on Slide 1 and the balance of the orange section on Page 2 is unchanged from the previous update. So our projected costs, our projected total budget remains at 61,051,403. So taking available funds from Section A... So taking available funds from Section A in our recap in Section C here, sixty-one million, seven sixty-three, two thirty-eight. Our current projected project budget of sixty-one million, oh five one. We have available dollars, available budget, unassigned funds, whatever you want to call it, of seven hundred and eleven thousand, eight thirty-five. In addition to that, within the construction cost, our G M P of forty-nine point six included, again, in Section B, we have a remaining contingency of one point three eight eight, oh seven eight. Of that, we have six hundred and sixty thousand dollars assigned to P C Os or cost changes, out of scope items that have come up during the course of construction, changes, construction bulletins that are issued. So we pull that from our available contingency and end up with a remaining unassigned contingency value of seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, oh seven seven. Combining that with the unassigned overall funding of seven hundred and eleven, we have one point four three nine million dollars left, currently unassigned dollars. So that is the overall report. As you get into our detail then.
Ross, this is Chris. Got a real quick question before we move on. The one, the one million, four thirty-nine, nine twelve number, does that include the interest credit?
Yes. Yes, that's eight seven.
Without the interest, we're at like eighty-eight thousand left, basically, of the, of that one million contingency that we built in the project.
Of the one point four three nine remaining, yes, one point two seven two of that is interest income. Correct.
And the, the interest income, as I understand it, and maybe Ben can explain this better, but this isn't profit, right? This is, we borrowed forty million dollars at like three and a half percent early. And then we invested some of that and we earned like two, two and a quarter percent, maybe two point four. And that generated some interest. So we're basically earning interest. We're earning two and a half percent on money we're paying three and a half percent for. So this is the top. This is money that we were used to, I guess, offset the amount. We're locking it at four percent rather than at a lower rate if we had borrowed later. Right? It's not, it's not profit.
Yeah, it's not, Dave, this is Kevin. It's not a profit line item. It's a, it's like having your savings account giving you interest. And when you get that interest, what do you do with it? I mean, you keep it in your savings account?
Well, it's more like, more like taking out a home equity line at five percent and then take, and then investing at C D with that money at two and a half. You're still negative.
But what do you do with that two and a half percent income? That's, that's, it's a source, it's listed on that earlier page as a source.
Right. My understanding was that we were locking in what we thought was a really good rate at, you know, three and a half percent, borrowing earlier than we needed to and then investing it to offset if we were wrong about the rate, which we were, they went down. So you would use that to offset, you'd return those funds to the taxpayers to offset the higher rate in the early borrow of forty million.
You're saying, Dave, that you thought we borrowed too much and too early? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, no, I think, I'm not saying it's too much. I think our strategy was to borrow, lock in more than we needed, the forty million, early because we thought, you know, this rate was gonna be really good rate. And then, I think it was like three and a half percent or something like that. We didn't need the forty million at the time, right? That's why we invested it. So we would use that income to offset the amount of money we paid on the early borrow. We could, we could have borrowed twenty million and then waited several months and then borrowed another twenty instead of investing it and we would be money ahead.
Floating, Ben can speak to this better, but floating the bonds isn't just like going to the bank and getting a home equity loan. It's much more complicated than that. They gotta price it out. They do the, again, the rating of the school district, which, again, has not changed over a decade at least. The rating has remained the same. But it's not a real, it's not a real simple process. It takes about, how many weeks do you think to do that, Ben? From when you start, when you start talking about doing a borrow until it closes anew?
About six to eight weeks, I would say. You have to go through a credit rating process, get it approved, put out the bid, all those different processes.
What, was it six to seven or eight weeks or something?
Yeah.
About two months, Dave, it takes to do that.
And I, I'm not saying we did anything wrong. I think what we did was smart. I think what would be wrong would be to not use this income to offset the borrowing cost. If we're gonna spend this money as well, then we basically bumped the referendum up by a million and a half dollars.
No, the referendum stays at fifty-nine million, eight hundred. That's what, by law, that's what, what went out to the public. So that, that's fixed at that amount. What we're hoping to do is we'll have, hopefully, at the end of the project, extra money in our sources category, meaning our ability to pay for things than we spent. And at that point in time, if there's, that money's available, we could say what we want to do with this. Do we want to lower our debt service? Do we wanna, you know, what, what do we want to do with that? And that's a decision at the very end of the project. We're halfway, two-thirds of the way through.
Right. And that's what we were being careful with that four billion, I thought. And now it's gone. So now we're down to the, this money that is basically an interest offset, not a profit. I just want to make sure everyone understands that.
Yeah, I don't think anything's a profit, really, in this. You borrowed the money. If you remember our projections, I don't know. I don't want to put you on the spot, Ben. Do you remember what our interest weight we, we modeled in the referendum?
Originally, we were planning for four and a half and then we lowered a little bit to four and a quarter. If you remember, we locked in the largest amount, that forty million, the earliest we can, just because at that time, the market was very favorable and we wanted to lock in the largest sum of money to lock in that interest rate. You know, hypothetically, we could have balanced or spread it out more over, you know, multiple months or whatnot. But, you know, the market could have went up, it could have went down. It's, you know, you just kind of take that gamble and based on kind of where we're at, at that point, we wanted to lock in that large chunk. And we did get a favorable rate of that three and a half, so.
So that's our average cost is about three and a half percent?
That was just on the first borrow. The next two barrels of eleven million, nine million were two point one six percent. They're a little bit different in terms of they're smaller amounts and they're for shorter durations. And so that played into the, the interest rate. Not to say that if we borrowed forty million dollars later on, that we'd get two point one six on that amount. There's a lot of factors that play into that. So those lower amounts, those lower interest rates did bring our blooded rate down to, I think, just over three percent.
About three percent, yeah. So Dave, on the savings side, there is a savings there from what we modeled in the referendum, going from roughly four percent down to three percent. Over the life of the referendum, to every year, those, those interest costs are lower for us than we projected, which is, that is true savings for the taxpayers.
That's right, because they took a conservative approach, right? So I guess my, my point is, I want to return the, the funds to the taxpayers. But that's, I mean, because it's not, again, it's not profit. It's, it's, it's money earned on money we borrowed for more.
Okay, yeah, there's no profits in, in, in construction, I guess, that, yeah, so I agree with you on that part, yeah. Okay.
So we're continuing with the work on the project. Clearly, there's another phase and there's contingency there. Those dollars are there in the event that things surface that we didn't anticipate, so we could pay for those things.
And we'll cover some of those tonight. I think coming up in the slides, there'll be what those were, yes.
And, and to your point, Kevin, as we work through this project and we begin to wrap things up, there's gonna be dollars there and then it's a board's decision how they want to manage those dollars. Because we talked, it could go back to the taxpayers. It could use, it could be used to pay down debt. It could be used to cover some capital improvement projects that are drawing down funds from our Fund Ten. So there's a number of different options and those are the options that we'll have to discuss with the board as we near an end of this project.
And that's a good discussion to have because it means we have extra money left over. We're not over budget or, so that's a good discussion to have.
Yeah, I think we'd rather be in this position than on the flip side.
Right.
Especially under COVID.
Right.
New expenses because of that.
Okay.
Thanks, Ben. You can continue, Ross.
All right, we'll go briefly through the, the balance of detail of the budget. And on the page that you're looking at right now, this is just a recap of our, our G M P, the forty-nine point six million G M P. Again, you can see that we're over that number by six hundred and sixty thousand in, in P C Os that have come up that we're, again, using our construction contingency to account for. And that number has gone up, as you can see on the right-hand column. That's the delta from the previous update that we went through. It's gone up by eighty-two thousand, six fifty-one. And our contingency went down a bit. We were at one point five one zero million. To see at the center, near the bottom of the page, we're currently at one point three eight eight, which is what I reported on the overall project summary. So we've used up about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in contingency since our last meeting. And I can show you the detail on that on the upcoming pages. On the next page, you see where we've spent contingency at the various schools and what their category or their classification is currently approved items, proposed items and estimated items. Again, leaving us a balance of one point three eight eight, oh seven eight at the bottom. On the next page, you see our recap of allowances that are built into the G M P. Initial balance in the first column, eight hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred. We've projected costs to date. You can see that we're over on the winter conditions. We've gone through this in the past. However, those items that are highlighted in red are items that we're not going to have any, any costs in our G M P, partially because of costs being picked up in other line items. The furniture budget picked up, the first and, and third item highlighted red. The taraza patch just turned out to be a less of an issue, so we're not spending that eighty thousand dollars. So I think at the end of the day, at the end of the project, we will have some available dollars in the, in the allowance category. On the next page, this is the budget detail or the P C O, if you will, detail for the various schools. First page is high school and West Lawn. Items that have changed since the last update I've highlighted in yellow. One of the things we did with the eighty-two, six, six fifty-one was to replace the domestic water heater system at the high school, which was failing and needed to heat domestic water for the, the new kitchen. So that eighty-two, six fifty-one is, is the only change at the high school and West Lawn. On the next page, Parkview and Thorson, you can see no highlights. Nothing has changed since our last discussions. And at Webster Middle School, on the next page, again, nothing has changed since our previous discussions. Then we get into our contingency. Again, we spent a hundred, a hundred and twenty-two thousand, I mentioned earlier. You can see that those items have come up at the high school. C B number twenty-one, that's construction bulletin number twenty-one that was issued by the architect design team. We added some cord reels and some parking lot lighting in the northeast parking lot. Those were things that were not previously described in the, in the bid documents, so we didn't have them accounted for specifically. So we're using contingency dollars to account for those now. And then coordination on A V, audiovisual requirements for the high school. Actually, got to cut off a little bit. That's high school and West Lawn. Added raceways and outlets, totally forty-eight thousand, eight sixty-nine. Those are both estimated at the time of this report. We're vetting that. And when it is fully, fully vetted, we'll take that to the approval team and, and get that pulled up to approved, hopefully. So those are, I should back up. There's no changes at Parkview-Thorson contingency, no changes from the previous report. And on the last page, no changes at Webster contingency.
Are you, as we're getting several weeks out from opening now, are you comfortable that, like, I drove by West Lawn the other day. It looked like still a lot of work to do on the front of West Lawn. Is that on track to be completed before school opening?
Yeah, it will be done, yes. So sliding into the finish line.
All right. And the same at the high school. I saw, as we toured a few weeks ago, that the new second floor space was almost completed weeks ago.
Yeah, that's, that's looking really good, the second floor, the kitchen. We're, we're, again, heading towards our health department inspection next week, Thursday. Our final inspection on either Friday or Monday of the following week.
Okay, all for final, or T C O, temporary? Do you get, they do like temporary certificates of occupancy and C D R?
Uh, yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I don't know if there's other questions from the members?
No other questions. Thanks, Ross. And then your team has been doing a fabulous job heading to the finish line for Phase One here at the high school and finishing up at the middle school and the other three elementary schools. It's, it's, it's great to see those spaces come together and, and I know the teachers are excited to move into those spaces. And it's part of the challenge that we're facing, board members, because we have new spaces. We're in a COVID environment. We have to get occupancy and then teachers are ready to get in there and start, and start setting up their classrooms. And so our teachers are being asked to do a lot and to kind of, it's the pause button right now in some of them because they can't get into their spaces. But they're gonna be very excited when they get into those spaces. Thanks, Ross, for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Russ.
Thanks, Russ.
I think the next item is, we get into recommendations, Chris, and there is an item there that has to deal with the building project. And John, are you speaking to this or is Ross gonna speak to this? Can I just keep rolling, Chris? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
So the recommendations, the first item is the board may take action regarding the C H S band room acoustical work. Ross is gonna speak a little bit to this. This item had been vetted through our core team. It went to Buildings and Grounds and now it's coming to the full board. And it was a recommendation from Buildings and Grounds to come to the full, full board for consideration and approval. In a nutshell, what we're looking at is trying to eliminate sound drift from the band room into nine classrooms. A number of classrooms on the first floor and the second floor. We looked at providing some remediation in the classrooms and looked at that cost. And then we looked at providing just remediation in the band room. And when we did the cost analysis, it made sense that we just addressed the band room, which would eliminate and take care of the sound float into those other nine, those nine classrooms. Historically, those are nine classrooms that are not desirable for our teachers because there is sound drifting out of those rooms during instruction time. And we had an acoustical engineer in there and they were there when school was in session and they could hear the band. So we really looked at real-time conditions and looked at two potential options to remediate it. And we landed on providing acoustical addressing, dressing, if you will, in the band room, which was a lower cost than addressing the, the nine classrooms.
Correct.
What you're looking at here on this image, how am I doing, Ross? All right?
You're doing great.
All right. So how, if you're looking at this image, you can see the red line there. And that red line is the wall that abuts the nine classrooms, a number on the first floor and on the second floor. And the thought was that that would be the wall that would receive the dressing to minimize the sound flow.
Those are the, those are the practice rooms, those smaller rooms?
Yes.
Yep.
How long would that, would that be out of commission, the, the band room?
We look at doing this in the summer of next year, twenty-one, if, if this were to move ahead. Because it is, it's going to be disruptive. We need to take down ceiling. We need to remove cabinets from the wall and then build that new wall. There's.
So is it all summer? Does the band use the, the facilities in the summer?
The majority of our work is outside during the summer. And what's the likely, would that take a week, Ross, two weeks?
It would take about three to four weeks.
Okay, great.
And it's, and just as a question, why did we did not include this in?
And it's, and just as a question, why did we did not include this in our referendum plans? Was this a new problem that just popped up, or what, as we kind of were planning remodels on that?
Yeah, the current concern wasn't noted early in the project. It came up after, after construction had started. It was brought up by staff. So it became a part of discussion. We opted to bring in an acoustical engineer to check it out and make some recommendations, and we're to this point at this time.
And Brandon, I think when they were doing some of the work and they started to get up above the ceiling, they can see some gaping holes, if I'm not mistaken, that where the sound was traveling. And so the question was, should we address that? And that just began to, it was the start of the conversation.
What classrooms are adjacent to that wall? And what kind of feedback have you gotten from the teachers over the years?
John, what are those classrooms?
Kirsten Rose was an occupant of one of those classrooms.
History answer.
She can attest, but it's the two-hundred level classrooms on the, on the north side, and it's the forties classrooms, the forty-one, two, three, four, on the lower level by the elevator.
Kind of across from the LGI, when we used to have our meetings in the LGI, it would have been, instead of turning left to go into that back door of the LGI, you kind of, it would be to your right.
Yeah, the rooms abutting the band room on the south side.
And the second floor would have been the social studies rooms, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, math.
Yeah, math.
Now, those are, math is relocated, but, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Well, this, this just occurred to me, and I don't want to put you on the spot, John, but this wall that goes in, I can see it working well for the classrooms that it's adjacent to, but how does that stop the rooms on the second floor, on the second level?
It only goes up to a certain level. The band room only goes to the mid-level of the second floor.
Oh, okay, because it's a higher ceiling in there.
Yeah, that's correct. So in fact, if we did this on the inside of the, of the classrooms, we would disrupt to a certain height below the window sills. And at that point in time, you're really kind of hodgepodgeing it together, and at a higher cost, it made no sense.
Yeah, this is an easier project.
When we kind of redesigned and looked back at it, and we thought it might make more sense, and acoustically be a little more sound, to actually bring that into the band room, move the cabinets out, and be a little bit less disruptive, but it would have to be done over the summer, because it took time for the acoustical engineer to get us the information, once that information got cast forward, to develop the budget, and then here we are.
And I may have missed this. Where were the funds coming from for the cost of the work, if approved?
This is part of the referendum.
This would be part of the referendum.
It is, okay. Part of the contingency, yeah.
Correct. And this is a project that doesn't, it's not going to happen until next year, so...
I mean, it's, and Ross, I don't think the ordered lead time on any of these materials is super long. So this, I, we wanted to bring it to the board to let you know this is out there, but it doesn't mean we have to vote on it now. We could certainly wait and see how the budget's going and the buyouts, when the buyout's done in a few months, or, and then decide that. It's just an item that's floating out there. But just to make the board aware of it, I don't know if we have to have a vote on it.
And how the classrooms are shuffled around right now currently, it's really going to pretty, it's going to be more imperative once the classrooms are set next year, because we're kind of temporarily shuffling classrooms around until December, when we get the offices done, and then we get the full effect of the entire high school when it's completed. So they won't be fully in place until December, when we get the, when the phase two is completed and the high school offices are in place, and we start to make those moves.
It's on the agenda for possible action, so my thought was, I'll make a motion that we approve it, knowing that it can always be pulled off later if the budget doesn't allow it, but at least so that we take some action on it, so that they know to continue what they're planning. It just makes sense to me to put something in to prevent students from classrooms being interrupted while in their learning from band instruments playing.
And my office abutted that area on the, on the, what would be the west side, and it was unbelievably noisy. Now, that side of that has got a firewall that's been put in place, so they got double protection on that side. It is really truly the, what would be the south side of the band, band room that is in need of soundproofing.
It's just something, you know, that does happen when you do building projects, that we missed it. It just should have been done. I mean, I make a motion, we approve it, knowing that it can always be pulled if funding doesn't allow it.
I would support that if we can, Ross, if we could add this as, like, approved or tentative, so that we, we don't forget about it later on. And before you order materials, you know, next spring, we rethink that if there's a need to say, wait, we're, we're running out of contingency, we don't want to, we don't want to do this, or we can't afford this project.
Correct, correct.
I would, if that can be done, I would second the motion.
Perhaps this is an item that, Ross, as you present your budget, we can have it just in a parking lot there, knowing that it's been approved, so then we can just monitor the contingency. That makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
What Kevin said is good with you?
Yeah, that's what I said. He just reworded it into Kevinism.
So Kevin, is that a second?
Yes, it is.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got some concerns, because from the very beginning, when we had the, whatever, four million contingency, the conversation was that we were going to try to return as much as possible back to the taxpayers. I don't have anything personally, I don't have any personal issue with the band room or anything like that. My issue is that we are almost out of the funds. And the fact that we overborrowed at three and a half percent back in spring of 2019, so much that we earned a million and a half of interest on the borrowed funds, I think we got to find out putting those funds back to the taxpayers to offset the cost. And we just don't, there's almost nothing left in the contingency. So I, I don't think we should do this right now. We don't know what else is out there.
I'm also with Dave, just on the basis of so many costs coming up with COVID, just out of our regular budget, just committing funds where this just does not make sense right now. Even if we do get a chance to review it later, I just think we can just table it and talk about it later if, so I'm with Dave on this.
Dave, I just want to correct you, though. You keep saying we overborrowed, yet earlier you admitted that it was a good decision to do, so I just want to correct that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't mean it in a critical way, but what I mean is that we borrowed more than we needed at the time, and the thought was to lock in what we thought was a low rate, which I, I still think is a good idea. But my point is that we should use the interest we earned on the overborrowed funds to offset the interest we paid on those funds.
And I agree, we should be giving back the most to the taxpayers, but when we put an addition onto a school and we are having classrooms that teachers don't want to teach in because of the sound of the band, we should have caught that weight earlier. That's why I wanted to move forward on it now, knowing we can always, if we, if we start having overrun someplace else, we can always pull it. And it's just, it's just being put into the file, saying, yes, if we have the funds, we can do this.
Any further discussion?
Chris, just a point of clarification. Brandon, you had mentioned COVID costs, and just, just to be clear, this is all referendum dollars, and none of those referendum dollars are using, being used for any kind of mitigation with, with our COVID measures or equipment or PPEs?
I understand. I just think the optics are what they are. We have a lot of expenses coming up.
Thank you.
Well, I think earlier, didn't we have a list of potential running projects that if we could, we'd use it for contingency? I think for me, I'd rather not go to any approval, but like to Todd's point, just put it on that parking lot and just make sure we go back, because we might have to tier certain projects if other things come up. So I don't know if we need an approval tonight for that, or if we can just parking lot it with other items.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion in a second. We'll do a roll call. Leach?
Aye.
Pedberg?
Nay.
Creer?
Nay.
Cox?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Goldbeck?
Nay.
And Reimer is a nay. So motion does not pass. So to, to your point, Kristen, we can, we could bring him back if we wanted.
Mr. President, you guys cut out. I didn't hear the vote. Sorry. Did it pass?
You won.
It did not pass.
Okay, thanks.
But it'll be on the parking lot to re-review, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
So how much should we pay for the sound consultant?
We could get you that number, Rick. I don't know that off the top of my head.
But that recommendation stands. It doesn't go away.
I don't recall what the cost was for, it actually went through Growth Design Group, so I don't recall what the cost was.
Just, just wondering how much money we've expended if we decide not to do it. Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Next one is Mr. Knoll, and action regarding special education model.
Good evening. Tonight, we have in front of you a special edu, special education handbook, procedure and guidelines model. Federal special education laws and board policy requires us to have a handbook. And so tonight, I bring that in front of the board for adoption approval. I take no credit for the content, because the content was created by the state of Wisconsin. And if we've modified the content, we have to send it back to the state for their approval, because these are all federal guidelines and laws, regulations, both from the federal and state governments. So the content is all provided to us, and I put the logo and the school district name on it, and then I bring it forward to the board. The handbook, the content, is the backbone of our program. Everything in that handbook is how we operate our program. If we had or did not have the handbook, the program would operate the same, but by federal law, we are required to have a handbook that says we follow the federal law.
Ted, I just have one question. On the, your initial, your date says you referenced the state of Wisconsin, July of 2018, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that wasn't a typo.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
And they revise this generally annually. They haven't done it in a while, and I think just, you know, circumstances have precluded the federal government from updating, but the federal government usually is pretty good with their updates, so I would imagine this would be a kind of an annual summer thing.
Thanks.
I'm moved to approve, not like we have much choice.
A second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? We'll do a roll call. Leach?
Aye.
Pedberg?
Aye.
Creer?
Aye.
Cox?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Goldbeck?
Aye.
Reimer's an aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks.
John, I think the next item is policies. I don't know if you want to stay up there for that one as well?
Say that again, Todd, I missed that.
The next item for...
I'll just hit them quick. The committee reviewed these and recommended approval of these here. There is one we held out that I'll talk about in the committee report. So I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, Leach?
Aye.
Pedberg?
Aye.
Creer?
Aye.
Cox?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Goldbeck?
Aye.
Reimer is an aye. Passes unanimously. Moving on to donations, Mr. Bignacki.
Thank you, board members. This evening, we have a number of donations that we would ask to be approved through consent agenda. First item is one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars from the West Lawn PTO. This donation will be used to support the RAS Kids Computer Software Program. Next donation is in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from William and Sharon Lamakia. This donation will be used to support the softball field project. The next donation is in the amount of thousand dollars from Thomas and Jennifer Lackey. This donation will be used to support the softball field project. Next item is in the amount of ten thousand dollars from Randy Growth. This donation will be used to support the softball field project. The next donation is in the amount of ten thousand dollars from Port Washington State Bank. This donation will be used to support the softball field project. The next donation is in the amount of five hundred dollars from NIMT's family. This donation will be used to support the softball field project. Next is a donation of five hundred dollars from the Kalterski, what, Kalterski, Kalterski Group Incorporated. The donation will be used for the softball field project. The next donation, the amount of five hundred dollars from James and Michelle Coats. This donation will be used for the softball field project as well. Next donation, in the amount of five hundred dollars, this will, this will, five hundred dollars from the David and Suzanne Gothel. This donation will be used for the softball field project. Next is five hundred dollars from Mark and Lisa Jessup, again, used for the softball field project. The next donation is in the amount of thousand dollars from James and Jill Farm Sand. This will be used for the softball field project. Next donation, the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars from the Cedarburg Fast Pitch Club. This donation, again, used for the softball field project. Next donation, the amount of eight hundred dollars from the Ozaki Volleyball Club. This donation will be used for the Cedarburg High School Boys Volleyball Team. Next donation, the amount of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars from the Ozaki Volleyball Club. This donation will be used by the CHS Boys Volleyball Team. And the last donation, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty dollars from the Cedarburg Education Foundation. This donation will be used to purchase seventeen 3D printers across the district. I ask that the donation totaling forty-nine thousand, I think, the donation totaling... Yep. Seventy-eight thousand. Seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars be approved.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Very, very generous.
Extremely.
Roll call, Leach?
Aye.
Pedberg?
Aye.
Creer?
Aye.
Cox?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Goldbeck?
Aye.
Reimer's an aye, unanimous.
Can I ask what the softball field project is?
My understanding, John Coster's still here, but my understanding, it was to install a new, a new fence along the outside of the field. So sponsorship on the fence and, and official fence versus the temporary one we've had out there.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Moving on, Transportation Committee meeting. Mr. Creer, we kind of already touched on this. Dave, you want to add?
Yeah, I think we handled all that already last time.
All right.
Nothing's happened since then.
All right, buildings and grounds. Kevin, I know we talked about a lot of this already. Do you have anything to add?
No, we covered most of it tonight. We did talk about additional staffing of custodians on a temporary basis during COVID for cleaning the schools during the class day and at the end of the day, and some sprayers, electrostatic sprayers and other devices that they've got to, to keep the schools as clean as possible.
Okay. And then, Rick, you said you had an update from Policy Committee?
Yeah, we have one policy that we did not approve. It's still in the works. It's actually, there's some parts of it, it's a Title IX policy, that's actually being litigated at this time, so we didn't take any action on it. There's no penalty to us as long as we're in the process of passing it, so it is in the works. We are in the process, but we didn't want to just approve something and have to go back and change it later, so we're, we're still working on it.
So waiting for the outcome of the litigation?
Well, that and just reviewing some questions we had on it. The only thing that we did instruct Todd to do is legally, if there is a claim under it, we have to use the language that's in there. So as a committee, we just ask him to make sure he use that language if, for some reason, there is a claim that comes in, a complaint, so that we are legally covered per our legal counsel.
Okay, thank you. And then at this time, I will take a motion where we will adjourn into executive session to approve minutes and to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility pursuant to nineteen point eight-five-one C of Wisconsin statutes regarding teacher negotiations and compensation and a personnel matter. Do I have that motion?
Moved to convene in a closed session.
Kennedy, seconds.
Motion in a second. Roll call, Leach?
Aye.
Pedberg?
Aye.
Creer? Creer?
Aye.
Cox?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Goldbeck?
Aye.
Reimer's a nay, unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Box behind us for the closed session.